Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation from Pastor Josh Kincaid of Memorial Road Church of Christ. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Aya and Orin Hawthorne of Girl Scouts of Western Oklahoma, Troop 42. Please stand.
God of the universe and of each city, we are thankful for this gathering today to seek the good of this city. And today we pause and give thanks for those who sought the good of this city in the past. And as we have turned our attention this week toward Dr. King, we are thankful for people like Claire Looper, who was inspired by Dr. King and the work in Montgomery, and who wrote a play. And we're thankful for her students who performed that play. And for their conviction to bring the freedoms they experienced in other parts of the country here to Oklahoma City. And we're thankful for their determination and their tenacity. And so today may the encouraging words of Dr. King inspire us, and may his hard words convict us and help us see when we are the problem and give us courage to join with the solution. Today in this room, we're thankful for those who spend their time working with service contracts and change orders, city art and environmental services with parking and potholes, and people who spend their time working with mental health and substance abuse and trauma. For the people who don't get national headlines and win few accolades, but we know they're important and that they matter. And so I'm thankful today for the servants in this room who bless this city with their wisdom and their time and their energy and compassion and determination. For the blessings of this day, we give you thanks. Amen.
Now will you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Attention, the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Okay. I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we will start with item three, Office of the Mayor. Item B, 3B, will be stricken. We will bring that back at a future meeting. But item A, C, and D, I will now step to the front and present, as well as a proclamation. Why don't we start with Allied Arts? Where are...who's coming up? All right. Yeah, everybody. Why not? Our great team from Allied Arts. It is time again to celebrate Allied Arts Month and kick off the annual campaign. And to hear a little bit more about that, I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas the arts enhance every aspect of life in Oklahoma City, contributing to economic development efforts, enriching our quality of life, driving tourism, and exerting a profound positive influence on the development of our youth. Whereas youth arts education helps to foster discipline, creativity, imagination, self-expression, and problem-solving skills, while also helping to develop a heightened appreciation of artistic endeavors and cross-cultural understanding. The nonprofit arts industry generates direct economic activity of more than $602 million and supports the full-time equivalent of more than 20,000 jobs in the greater Oklahoma City area alone. Whereas Allied Arts has served as a champion of Central Oklahoma's cultural community and has infused more than $70 million to enhance our city's quality of life since 1971. Whereas Allied Arts supported 42 nonprofit cultural organizations last year, helping to fill the funding gap to ensure free and affordable programming for all, arts education in underserved schools, and healing arts for the sick, disabled, and veteran populations. Whereas the month of February is recognized as Allied Arts Month by the city of Oklahoma City, local businesses, and nonprofits, the community at large in recognition of the organization's vital support for our cultural community. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of February as Allied Arts Month in Oklahoma City, and he calls upon citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our community and to especially encourage greater participation in the arts by all of our citizens.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, obviously, as I've often said and many others have said, the arts are such an integral part of building the city that we want to build here. And so you guys are on the front lines of that, on all of this Allied Arts team and the volunteers for this current campaign. And Deborah, would you like to maybe expand on that a little bit? Deborah, center, the head of Allied Arts.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think we want to add a couple more whereas, because whereas the employees of the city of Oklahoma City were the top workplace that Allied Arts did last year for 120 workplaces. Our friends in the police departments, fire departments are so generous to our cause, and that makes us successful when we have the community-wide support that we need. And we continue to seek further community support. Also, whereas Allied Arts did just launch a new initiative, Art Around OKC, so an online portal, an online, so that it's a full calendar, so that citizens can know what's going on in our great city, free events, ticketed events, they're all captured there. We're really proud of that initiative that we are doing in conjunction with Oklahoma City Community Foundation. And we, just probably a couple weeks ago, you would have noticed hundreds of school buses right across the street at the civic center. And that was one of the programs that we helped fund to introduce children to orchestral music. And you will not be surprised that for many of them, it was their first time to ever hear a concert. Not only that, it was their first time to ever be in our beautiful civic center. So we want to help connect those people to make sure that all Oklahomacitians have access to the arts. Mark Bevort.
Thank you. There's not much else to add, other than thank you for your support here at the city. Also, this year, we have named our honorary chair, James Pickle. As you guys who know James, James has been a strong supporter of the arts in many, many facets, from arts festival through being on the board of the Arts, Allied Arts, for many, many years. Our goal this year is 3.45 million, $3,450,000, and we're hopeful to get 3.5 million. So we appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right. Well, let's thank everybody here for doing all they do for the arts. Thank you so much. All right. Why don't we bring up our Teacher of the Month, Edward Hudson? Yeah, bring him up with some applause. All right, Edward, we are very thrilled to have you here representing Putnam City Schools today. And why don't we learn a little bit more about you? And I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Edward Hudson has been named Teacher of the Month for January 2020 by Putnam City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Eddie received his bachelor's degree in instrumental music education from the University of Central Oklahoma before teaching in Edmond Public Schools for five years. Whereas Eddie worked as a music minister at Yukon's First Church of the Nazarene for five years. And whereas Eddie serves as director of bands for the Putnam City West High School and led the district to create jazz band curriculum he implements daily. Whereas Eddie was named one of only five excellent educators for Putnam City Schools in 2019. And whereas Eddie is dedicated to enthusiastic and dynamic teaching as a means of creating and nurturing a lifelong appreciation for the arts. Whereas Eddie accomplishes all this with the support of his wife, Michelle, and daughter, Carmen. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Edward Hudson on his selection as a January 2020 Teacher of the Month by Putnam City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Now, this is a resolution, and I think I would have to call upon Putnam City West Patriot, James Greiner, to make the motion. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You are the Teacher of the Month. Congratulations. And we'd love to hearing a little bit more about you. Now, we'd love to hear from you. So do you have a few words to share, Edward?
Councilpeople, Mr. Mayor, the city of Oklahoma City, I just want to say thank you. We're very grateful. Out of all the teachers you could have chose, you chose me. I'm very grateful for that. I'm thankful for Putnam City and all that they do in supporting the arts in all facets of the student and the whole student. And we're just very grateful for that. And of course, I'd love to say thank you to my wife, Michelle, and beautiful daughter, Carmen, for all your support, for all those days where I'm missing because of rehearsals. Thank you for supporting me, and I appreciate it. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And yes, yeah, let's hear it for Edward. Yeah, we've got your family, and we've got one of your principals, and your superintendent, who's a regular here, and Jennifer Seal as well, from the foundation. So great support network at Putnam City Schools. Thank you so much for all you do for our kids. Let's hear it one more time for Edward Hudson. All right. Why don't we bring up Jonathan Gary? How you doing? We have the best city employees in the nation, and today, we have the best of the best, I guess. So we are thrilled to have you, and we're proud of all you do. And we'd like to hear, I think we know quite a bit about you, actually, but I think we're going to learn just a little bit more. And I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Jonathan Gary has been a city employee for 19 years and is the Animal Welfare Superintendent in the Development Services Department. And whereas, since becoming superintendent in 2016, Jonathan has been overseeing divisional activities involving the animal shelter, veterinary services, and field operations. Whereas Jonathan is constantly in contact with city employees, residents, and outside agencies to exchange information and enforce rules, ordinances, and regulations. And whereas Jonathan also prepares the Animal Welfare Division's budget, goals, and objectives, and meets with state and federal agencies to discuss grants, new programs, and laws. Whereas Jonathan was integral in instituting the menacing dog ordinance and can be credited for increasing the shelter's live release rate to 86%. Whereas Jonathan is succeeding in bringing national attention to the city's animal shelter and representing the division as a leader in innovation for animal care. Whereas Jonathan is a remarkable city employee who cares deeply about all animals and represents the city professionally with the public and in the media. And whereas Jonathan consistently displays an exceptional work ethic and leadership skills. Whereas this council desires to recognize Jonathan Gary for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Jonathan Gary, 2019 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Year.
Very good. Well, let's make it official. Yeah, go ahead. He deserves it. I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Jonathan, we're, again, we're so proud of you. You know, I think the coalitions you have worked to build and the trust that people place in you was certainly a big reason that MAPS 4 included a new animal shelter and that that was such an integral part of the package. And so it was an exciting year for you on many fronts, I think. We would love to hear a few words from you. Would you like to share some wisdom?
Well, I just want to thank, when I'm blessed to work for the city and, yeah, I have a tremendous staff that any recognition I get, they deserve. And so I just feel blessed to be able to do what I do, and I love what I do. I'm very fortunate to get to come to work every day to a place that I get to save lives. And so it's very rewarding and something that me and all of our staff take a lot of pride in. So I thank you, everyone, for everything.
Let's hear it for Jonathan one more time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
And finally, let's bring up Sergeant David Rambo. Sergeant Rambo is our Police Officer of the Year, and we would like to hear a little bit more about you, Sergeant. And I would, so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Sergeant David Rambo has been a city employee for 17 years and is an information lead policing officer. Whereas Sergeant David Rambo collects, evaluates, and disseminates law enforcement-related information on suspects, witnesses, crime trends, stolen vehicles, and other crime-related information. Whereas Sergeant Rambo maintains the Spring Lake Division's crime statistics and data and routinely analyzes information to provide weekly reports to first-line officers, as well as the division supervisors and major. Whereas Sergeant Rambo is driven, diligent, detail-oriented, and understands the role his position serves. And whereas Sergeant Rambo is often praised by his supervisors for his interview and interrogation skills, his capacity to recall information, and his ability to locate suspects by identifying and analyzing their relationships with their associates. Whereas Sergeant Rambo has assisted in solving a variety of crimes, from robberies and assaults to shootings, often being a key player in locating the suspects for the arrest. Whereas Sergeant Rambo has been instrumental in lowering crime statistics by locating suspects, collecting evidence, and assisting in countless arrests. Whereas this council desires to recognize Sergeant David Rambo for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Sergeant David Rambo, 2019 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Police Officer of the Year.
Well, that's a big honor, Police Officer of the Year, and we are very honored that you have committed to so much service to the people of Oklahoma City. Thank you so much for all that you do. We would like to make this official. If somebody would like to make the motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You are the Police Officer of the Year. Let's hear it for Sergeant Rambo. Sergeant Rambo told me he's a man of few words, but he is going to give us at least a couple now.
Thank you all very much.
That was a few. All right. Well, let's hear it for Sergeant Rambo one more time. All right. We are now on items 3E, 3F, and 3G, appointments to IMSA, Park Commission, and the Traffic Commission, and we could take those with one motion?
Got a motion and a second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That concludes Office of the Mayor. Now we are at item four, A and B, that we can take with one motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to item five, requests for uncontested continuances. Looks like item 9A is already on the list. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. On page 10, under item 7AE6, this is a confession of judgment. The municipal councilor's office has asked us to strike this item from the agenda on page 14.
I'm sorry, what was that?
That was 7AE6.
Okay.
7AE6. We'll strike that one. Under, on page 14, 9E1, Dilapidated Structures. It's 9E1A, 806 Southeast 11th Street. We'll strike this. The owner is removed. On page 15, item 9F1, under item 9F1, all of these we will strike. Item F, 2501 Northwest 14th Street. The owner is secured. Item O, 1305 Northeast 54th Street. The owner is secured. Item S, 245 Northwest 120th Street. The owner has secured. Item L, this is on page 16, I'm sorry, under 9G1, page 16, 9G1 now, under abandoned buildings. We'll strike both of these items. Item L, 1305 Northeast 54th Street. The owner is secured. Item M, 245 Northwest 120th Street. The owner is secured. And then on page 18, we have 9R1B. The municipal councilor's office has asked to strike this item, and I think the mayor mentioned item, on page 19, item 10A1B. That was a claim for approval, and we're going to strike this item as well. And that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Looks like we have no revocable permits today, so we will recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have items A through D we can take with one motion?
Got a motion and a second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCMPFA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through C we could take with one motion? I'm sorry. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we will convene, we will adjourn OCPPA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have items A and B we can take with one motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Reconvene is the council meeting, where we find ourselves on page seven, I'm sorry, page four of your printed agenda, item seven, the consent docket. And if I recall correctly, Mr. City Manager, there are no scheduled presentations. Is there anything that anyone wishes to pull out for separate vote or for separate mention slash discussion?
Mayor, could we pull out item zero, or excuse me, O for Oscar?
Which was that? I didn't hear you.
The what?
What did you say? I couldn't hear you.
Item O.
O? You just want to talk about it?
Yes.
Okay.
If we can pull item H for separate vote, it pertains to my full-time employment.
Okay.
I'd like to pull item R2 for discussion, and also item X.
Okay.
7Y.
7Y. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else? We'll take them in order, which means Councilwoman Hammond, I might ask you to step out for a second. Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt just item 7H?
Got a motion and a second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with Councilwoman Hammond abstaining and out of the room. All right. Now moving on to item O. Councilman Stone.
Yeah, I knew previously we approved a preliminary on this thing, but now the estimated construction cost on this pedestrian bridge is over $3 million. Really just hoping someone can explain to us how that's a better use of funds than potentially a lack of sidewalks on main arterial streets across the majority of the rest of the city.
Eric Winger will respond to that.
Thank you, Councilman Stone. This project, which is actually the pedestrian bridge over the Northwest Expressway, is actually a 2007 and a 2017 bond project combined. It was originally anticipated that it would be constructed under the '07 alone, but once the original engineering was done on that, and again, this is to provide that safe passage across Northwest Expressway, which is a high-volume, high-traffic street, funds weren't available. So in the 2017 bond issue, additional funds were included to make sure that the project could move forward. The expense is due just to the expanse and the width of Northwest Expressway, six lanes traditionally, but crossing at an intersection also includes turn lanes, so it's seven lanes at this location. It's at Wilshire where it crosses, so it's actually connecting two trails across Northwest Expressway as well, so it provides for that trail connectivity. Simply just the cost of the project is estimated at $3 million just due to the size and the length, the ability and need to have to provide ADA access. It includes full ramp structures, completely to the top, up and down, but it also includes stairs as well.
And this is a listed project in the bond program, correct?
Listed in '07 and listed again in the '17.
How many, how much linear sidewalk can you do for 3 million, roughly?
Between $300,000 and $400,000 a mile, just depending on the complexity of the roadway.
So that would be, what, 10 miles of sidewalk?
Nine to 10 miles approximately, yes.
Thank you. Can we vote on that separately, please?
Okay.
Well, my question is this, though. If it's listed in the GeoBond, I mean...
We have to do the project. Yes, because it was listed when it was voted in the project.
Do we think the pedestrian bridge is the best way to do that, most efficient way to do that?
So we do. Again, I wasn't on the original team in 2007 that proposed the project, but it has been proposed as being that connector across Northwest Expressway for the trail and also for pedestrians that are in the area.
Thank you.
So you're hoping, you're looking for a separate vote now on that?
No, I think we're kind of stuck on it because it's listed out separately in the GeoBond, so it's something we said we would do. I guess my disappointment would be is that we could have 10 miles worth of sidewalks, nine or 10 miles worth of sidewalks on main arterial streets that still have a lot of goat paths on them. Instead, we're going to fix an intersection, I guess.
Todd, I totally get your point about whether or not this is the best use of $3 million, and, you know, we could debate that for a long time. I don't know if it is the best use, but I do know that the bridge will get used quite a bit, mainly by cyclists, because there are a lot of cyclists who are connecting from the Overholser Trail to the Hefner Trail there. They're at that intersection all the time, waiting at the stoplight, and now it's going, they're going to be able to cross the, cross the expressway in a much safer way now. So I think it's going to be a good project, even though it is $3 million.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item 7R2. Councilwoman Nice, you wanted to mention that.
Yes. The reason I wanted to bring this up is it involved a great conversation between the mayor of Luther and also our county commissioner, and she asked us to come to Luther and talk to her about how we could improve this area. And I'm thankful to say that with that partnership with the county, we are now able to do that for Luther and our residents that live within our Oklahoma City limits that also travel in that area. So we're excited about what is to come for this new project for our community. So thank you so much to everyone involved, and thank you, Mr. Winger, because I stayed on you as much as I could when we finally made it work. So thank you.
That's great. I, too, have taken the Luther tour with the mayor of Luther up in that area. And a lot of people don't realize, obviously, how big we are and that we, you know, it's an Oklahoma City street that takes you from the Turnpike to downtown Luther. So I know they will all be very pleased. Also, moving on, same, same councilwoman, item 7X, you wanted to discuss?
Yes. I wanted to make mention about the artwork of Paul Moore. I know a lot of us may or may not have seen the Centennial Land Run Monument that took over 20 years, but the reason I bring him up in this work is because there is a dedicated art section that he received an award from the National Cowboy Western Heritage Museum to have his artwork placed there. And I went to see it last week, and I must say, it is an amazing piece of art. So I would encourage people...
dedicated art section that he received an award from the National Cowboy Western Heritage Museum to have his artwork placed there. And I went to see it last week, and I must say, it is an amazing piece of art. So I would encourage people, if you are unable to physically go to see all of the monument, that you take, take time to visit the National Cowboy Western Heritage Museum to see the works of Paul Moore as well. Thank you.
It is a remarkable achievement. Okay. Now we've got Councilman Stone Cypher for item Y.
Thank you, Honored. We have a delegation here today from Sister Cities International OKC, Inc. They're on the back row. Would you all please stand? And I wanted to note that item seven Y is a Sister City agreement. Can, one of you, Mary, can you come up and just explain the agreement a little bit? And whilst she's walking up, I want to say, if you're not familiar with Sister Cities, they do a wonderful job, and I'm not saying that just because I'm on the board, but they do a great job in promoting Oklahoma City, not only in the United States but around the world.
Thank you. We're excited to be here. Sister Cities was founded in nineteen fifty-six by President Dwight Eisenhower as-
Mary, you can flip around, flip around. You can't, I don't think I'm going to show you on TV that way.
Okay. Okay. Sister Cities International was founded in nineteen fifty-six by President Eisenhower. He had fought in World War II and saw the travesty of what happened with war, and so he had a vision to have a people-to-people relationship to prevent future war and conflicts. And so that's what it's about. Enrique Villar is our honorary consular from Peru, and we've been working diligently. We have a great relationship with Peru, so we're excited to be here. Like I said, Councilman Stone Cypher is on the board, and Mookie Wright is on the board. Thank you.
We have a lot of great volunteers, including Mary, chief among them, who keep this organization going, and I think it's such a great thing for our city. I often comment that it's as much about, it helps us connect, I think, with people in our city who come from faraway places as much as it is about these partnerships, but they're obviously very important, too. And it's no small thing when we create a new one. And so today is something of a momentous day. We only have, this isn't like a gotcha, but how many Sister Cities do we have?
We have eight.
After today?
After today.
After today, we'll have eight, so.
And I have to brag that Oklahoma City is one of the, we have the largest number of members in the United States.
We have the what?
The largest number of members.
Oh, with the, yeah, when I go to the meetings, you know, the events, they're, they are well-attended.
So we have approximately two hundred members, and we have a very diverse board from every different country. So we're trying to, we are a diverse city, diverse country, and so we're trying to build those bridges.
Cool.
Mayor, could we vote on this separately, please?
Sure. Okay. All right. We will move, the item has been moved. Is there a second? So this is just for item seven Y. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You got your own vote.
Thank you.
Mark felt it was historic enough, you should have your own standalone vote, and indeed it is. Okay. Also, we had a citizen who signed up to speak, Joy Reardon. This is specifically actually on seven O, which was the pedestrian bridge previously discussed, so.
Actually, I would like to read something that I replied to online, if I could get a couple of minutes. It was about the bridge. All of the new buildings, they, and they can't fix sidewalks so that we don't have, have to be in the street, and with the ADA celebrating thirty years this year for me and about thirty thousand other wheelchair and ADA that lives, lives here in Oklahoma City, that try to get around and can't, and can't, everyone try and think about that and ask yourself as to why there's no sidewalks that can, that we can walk down, and that way we don't have to be out in the street, out into traffic. That's why I am, I am not okay with this new bridge, because it will only serve about two to three percent of people that live in Oklahoma City. And the other people that can't and does nothing for us, there are so many new buildings going on downtown that the sidewalks are in bad shape, and I'm not talking about the core of Oklahoma City. From Council Road to the west, to Bryan Avenue to the east, to Willshire Boulevard in the north, to one hundred and fourth in the south. Maybe we need to try and take care of these areas so that we have good places to walk and people with disability has a place that we can keep out of the street. Last year, if you look at the police department, seven people in wheelchairs and stuff like that got whacked and murdered in this, in this city. Why do we need a bridge? And that's my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll be back later.
All right. So we are now through all the items that people wanted to discuss. I would take a motion to remove the items separate from the ones that we already approved. Okay. We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to the concurrence docket, where we have items A through J that we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item nine, items requiring separate votes. We'll start with item nine A. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for-
This one was stricken.
Oh, this was stricken. Yep, should have made a better note on that.
Deferred to.
Okay. So this was previously deferred under our previous discussions when we requested uncontested continuances. So we are now on item nine B. This is the third of three meetings on these ordained, proposed ordinance changes that give the Public Works Director some additional authorities. These are ordinances on final hearing relating to motor vehicles and traffic. It's B one and B two. Really, we're just at final consideration at this point. If anybody would like to make a motion for B one.
Move the items.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And item nine B two. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine C, public hearing regarding an ordinance related to bringing our local gun ordinances into compliance with changes in state law. This is the second of three meetings on this topic. The first was a presentation and introduction. Today is merely a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding item nine C?
Maybe me. I'm not informed on it, but I'm interested.
Okay.
As you can see, I'm here for cannabis, so I wouldn't plan to say anything about guns.
I saw that and I was a little concerned. So are you loosening the gun laws in Oklahoma City or are you restricting things?
So this isn't really, this is a public hearing.
All right. I'm sorry.
He would be happy to sit with you afterwards and answer your questions.
Let me put it this way, then. If it turns out you guys are restricting our gun rights, I'll go after you hard. I'll let everyone in your wards know what's going on, because I'm a big gun rights person, too. And so as long as you're actually liberalizing, and by liberalizing, I mean relaxing or loosening gun laws, I'm all for it. And if you're going to make it harder for people to have guns and to walk around with a gun in their pocket or something like that, I'm all against it. I'm a cripple, and sometimes at night I'll put a gun in my pocket if I go to the grocery store, because I go late, like midnight, one o'clock. And I like the fact that when I'm letting myself into my door again, I've got a gun in my pocket, because I live in a neighborhood where they found a dead body across the street a few years ago. So as long as you guys are pro-gun and making it easier for gun owners, I'm all behind you guys. But if I find out that what you're doing is not, I will let everyone I can know that you didn't. That's really all I've got to say. I hope you're going to give us more freedom, not less.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under the public hearing for item nine C?
I just do, I do have some extra questions about it, if that's okay, if no one else is. So after last meeting, I've just read over it a few more, and I'm still, I feel like I'm still not clear. So if you could come, I'm very, I'm just sort of curious, could, could you give us like an example, I guess, like a, you know, like an example essentially of what this would do versus what would hap, like if, if someone was pulled over right now with a pistol in their vehicle, what would happen today? And then when, if this went into effect, what would happen?
So let me start by saying that the legislature gave cities two areas where they could regulate weapons. One is the discharge of a firearm in city limits, and the other one is the one we're talking about, which is transporting the firearm in a motor vehicle. Before the ordinance changed, you could transport a firearm in a motor vehicle as long as you were doing so in accordance with state law. At the time, you had to have your concealed carry license. So as you know, the state law has broadened the ability to carry a firearm, so we have broadened the ability to transport the firearm in the same way. So if you were pulled over in Oklahoma City today by an Oklahoma City police officer, as long as you are not prohibited from carrying that weapon, the type of weapon, the way it's being carried, then you wouldn't be in violation of our city ordinance.
Okay. And how, how does the officer know if you are in compliance?
Well, the first thing is, there's, it's difficult for the officer to observe a violation of the state law, because as long as you're of age and you're not otherwise prohibited from carrying a weapon, you can transport it openly or concealed in your vehicle. So if the officer were to make a stop on somebody and observe a weapon, that alone wouldn't signal to them that the person is carrying it illegally. And without any additional reasonable suspicion, they couldn't do any further inquiry either.
Okay. Because the, because I just, I think of the case of Philando Castile in Minnesota, where he was carrying a gun in his car legally, and he informed the officer of that and was still shot, because I guess the officer interpreted that by him saying, you know, I have to get my license, but there, I have a, you know, a concealed carry permit, and it, I have the gun in my, the same place I'm going for my license. He said all of that and, and was still murdered. So I'm just, I'm curious how we make, we ensure that that's not happening, particularly when someone might not fit the description-
Yeah.
-of, of what might be a person who isn't prohibited from carrying-
Well, I don't want to blur the, the facts of that case with, with the ordinance, but I would probably say, or characterize that more in a use-of-force context than I would a municipal ordinance. Our ordinance would simply allow the person to carry the weapon in accordance with, with state law. I mean, as long as the officer doesn't have any reason to believe or have knowledge that they're carrying the weapon contrary to law, then there would be no reason to take any action. For officer's safety, they may ask them to not touch it, or please leave it alone, that kind of thing, but there's, it would be hard for me to imagine a situation where, like what you described would occur as a result of this ordinance, because this kind of makes it easier to transport a firearm, either open, concealed, loaded, or unloaded.
Sure. I just-
In certain communities.
Yeah.
Let's just make that very clear. It does not happen like this everywhere.
Right.
Especially to her point of the story that she's talking about, and also considering what happened the very first day after we passed this state gun law, where people can just openly carry, and a gentleman comes into a community on northeast Twenty-third Street with a AR-15, just walking down the street, willfully intimidating the community, no. That's, I understand you have a right, but when you go around intimidating the community, that's a different type of conversation and situation that we incur. And I understand we're still talking about this topic, but these are, these are the concerns that are continuously happening in the community that I serve, and these are the concerns that are continually misconceived when it comes to people who actually still have the right reasons to carry and unfortunately are seen as if they don't. And that obviously speaks to that use of force and why we continually ask and asked of the implicit and explicit bias training, so we can continually have that conversation interwoven into what use of force looks like. And I know we're still talking about this, and this is a public, public meeting, public hearing. I do want to make mention, we had a conversation of Sunday, and one of the representatives did get up and speak and say that there is an opportunity for them to go again for an initiative petition to repeal this law. So I'm very concerned now when it comes to us just going initially and passing this with now the opportunity for this to still be repealed from initiation, initiative petition.
So our intent, like this is just getting in compliance with the state law as it's written. If there were something to happen, and action was taken to repeal that, we would come back and bring language back to put us back in, in conformity with the state law.
Yes. If for some reason our ordinance became, you know, noncompliant with state law, then we would most likely move to change it accordingly.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate sort of, I find myself in a funny place, because in myself, I'm like, no, I would want people to have higher hurdles to jump, for it to be legal for them to transport a firearm in their car. But at the same time, I hear, well, you know, if I was carrying a car in my, or a gun in my car, and I was a person of color who would, it's like, well, I don't, you know, there's no, unless there's something else going on, you know, I actually have a little more freedom and protection under the law. But my concern is, and I know that my, my own personal inherent implicit bias and racism, if I saw someone walking around just in public with a gun, my, my initial, without any, any of my reason in interpreting, my, my initial, like my, the socialization of racism in our society would, would apply and assume something different about if someone was black or Hispanic or white, and particularly, you know, knowing that for myself, I'm a little more, I hope I'm more aware of it and can say, wait, stop that. It doesn't matter what, you know, what color their skin is, but knowing that that's what we all carry around in ourselves. My worry is that this isn't going to be equally applied, and that from the city end, an officer might be able to say, well, I had suspicion that something else was going on, even if there wasn't, and particularly because of an assumption about the community they're in or the color of their skin. And so that's my worry. And again, it's sort of like, I don't really know if there's anything we can do, because we're just having to get in compliance with state law. But I didn't want to go without voicing that, because I hope that as we continue conversations about implicit bias, that we can continue to be aware of that, because if nothing else, I hope that that's an opportunity to, to change that and be aware of it for ourselves. So I appreciate your answers.
And I, I know, even with this, when it's pat, when, after our public hearing and all is said and done, obviously, I would like for us to work with the communities who will truly be affected by the intent or just the assumption of what this looks like, and have very healthy conversations with the community, with the police chief, with the officers for those different shifts that would have that influence of who would be the one to, to make the decision of, of what takes place during that stop.
I appreciate these comments. I would like to add as well my concern. I take every word of the Second Amendment very seriously. That includes shall not be in French. It also includes the words well-regulated. It's all there. When I think of the history of civil rights, gun rights in this country, I- of the history of civil rights, gun rights in this country, I also know that, and anyone who's dug into the history knows this as well, 1619 slaves were brought to this country, and for 200 to 300 years, black women and men are by law restricted from exercising a Second Amendment right. They are not allowed to own a gun. And I didn't know that until somewhere in the last decade, as I dug into the history a little bit more. And as someone who, again, takes every word of the Second Amendment very seriously, I, that history shook me, because all of a sudden, I started to understand why black and brown people who by law had been restricted from gun ownership, take gun ownership. A lot of them actually do take it seriously, and they, and they, the right to own a gun, they take it seriously. Which brings us back to Philando Castile, right? Because that man had a gun, told the police officer he had a gun, and that man ended up dead. And that man looks a lot like me. And he looks a lot like kids who are growing up at the school where I taught. And I want to believe that they will be, if they own a gun, and they are doing so under the state law of permitless carry, that they will be fine in those cars if they're transporting those guns. But when I think of that young man who was shot, exercising his right to have one, I get really worried. So now I'm, I, I, I'm very concerned and hope, to counsel person, Ice's point, that we, as a city, and as a police force, are doing everything we can. And I know we are having conversations about implicit bias training, use of force training, trauma-informed policing, as it pertains to training. All of those things have got to work together to undo a legacy of, that's, that's not so good, when it comes to civil rights, and even as it pertains to the Second Amendment. So I just want to add my voice to that as well. As complex as that was, it always complex. So thank you for listening to that.
Okay. And I think Joy Reardon would like to speak in this public hearing as well.
Well, it's just a quick question. It says in here, towards the bottom, transportation of loaded pistol in a motor vehicle. Okay. A motor vehicle, do you realize that tractor-trailers, city buses, Ubers, any form of a motor vehicle would fall under this?
Is that what you-
City buses and stuff like that.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, it's probably a defined, motor vehicle's probably a defined phrase in the law.
Yeah, can we just, thank you for that.
Yes. The, the term "motor vehicle" and "vehicle" would be defined both in state statute and in city code. And it is pretty much any vehicle that is motorized and operates on the road.
So motorized and operates on the road. Although, public transportation has a separate set of laws regarding guns.
Well, I mean, the vehicle itself would qualify under the definition, but it would be categorized differently.
Streetcar?
It has, has its own definition.
So maybe we should put it in there, in personalized vehicles, not on public transit? Because-
I think public transit is not captured in the definition of motor vehicle, correct?
It is a motor vehicle.
No. The streetcar is not, it's, it's one of the categories excluded from the definition of motor vehicle.
I mean, it's not in the law.
I understand that.
It's not a motor vehicle in the-
But if someone wanted to press the issue, like this gentleman right here, with, with their gun laws and everything, technically, a person with a gun and everything can go on public transit. Under the definition of motor vehicle, they're within their, their right to go on it, on that vehicle-
Right. But it considers a separate set of laws for public transportation, which actually does allow-
It, it, it's really state law that allows you to carry a firearm under the streetcar.
Yeah.
It's, it's really state law that grants the right. All the city has done with the enactment of this ordinance would be to expand that right to city code, which, prior to the change, didn't exist. We restricted it. And now we had to expand it, because we're preempted under the state law. So we have to conform with the expanded carry rights under state law.
This was reiterated at the initial presentation last meeting, but probably worth pointing out, we're not actually doing, making any discretionary decisions here. This is just changing our, our ordinances to comply with-
That's, that's correct.
-state law, really, we have to do.
Right.
Or we would be sued if we didn't.
Well, to enforce, within the city, you would have to-
Right. Well, I mean, if we tried to enforce a law that's no longer applicable under state law, we would-
It would be unenforceable, yes.
-be sued for having, tried to enforce an unenforceable ordinance.
Correct. Yes.
But I, I would like to add, it's very important for, again, for the education piece for our communities in, in this, because I'm already getting hit from community members in, in my ward, not about this, but about the parks petition that has been initiated, as if we did it. So therefore, that's something, this is a conversation we must have separately for our communities to understand, this is a change from the state level that is implemented to our city level, for our communities to really understand that. But again, in order to continue a healthy conversation, we must have continued community policing engagement in this process of the conversation for our communities.
Okay. I think that concludes our public hearing on item 9C. Now we're at 9D. This is a public hearing regarding an ordinance that affects marijuana smoking and vaping. This is the second of three meetings on this topic. It was introduced at the last meeting, would be potentially considered at the next meeting, and today is merely the public hearing. And we do have at least one person who has signed up to speak, Rick Duncan.
That's me.
Okay.
In fact, you ought to remember me. Me and you got into an argument at Oklahoma County Public Convention a few years ago, before I lost my leg.
Okay.
You're very, very weak on cannabis.
Okay.
Very strong on being anti-cannabis.
All right. So if you'd state your name and address, and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Sure. My name is Rick Duncan, D-U-N-K-I-N, 1309 Southwest 60th. That puts me in your ward, Mr. Greenwell. And I'm standing here today to let you know that if you're doing anything to restrict cannabis, I will oppose you like Gandalf against the Balrog. Cannabis is non-toxic. They estimate it takes about 150 pounds, smoked over 15 minutes, to kill you. And you're worried about a little bit of vapor in the air, or a little bit of THC floating in some smoke? I should be able to walk down the street smoking it if I want to. I think currently, that's not the law, because the stupid legislature has been attacking 788. And through that end, I've created a website, 788 Traders. And I plan to use it to try and get every one of them that voted for Point 612 unelected. And if you guys start restricting cannabis on no scientific basis, I'm going to have a special tab for the City Council of Oklahoma City, and I got a hunch, most of you will end up being traders and, and try to restrict cannabis more. You should be freeing up cannabis use in the city. I don't understand what problems you see that you're trying to fix. It's, what, has some business paid you guys off? I don't understand it. The agenda doesn't make sense. It's coming from somewhere stupid, in my opinion. And like I said, I will oppose all of you. I will make it clear who was anti-cannabis. And I, you do realize that, what was it, 67% of the county voted for 788? So you guys think you're above the 67% in this county? Well, good luck with that. Hopefully, they'll be angry enough with any, any of you that decides to be traders, that you will become unelected. And I guess that's all I've got to say. And I've studied cannabis since at least 2007. So if any of you guys want to come to me after the meeting and ask questions, I can give you actual scientific information if you want. I've read a lot on the National Institute of Health website. I'm a cannabis user. Oh, and you may think that we're all just passive. You forgot the 60s. Cannabis erases mind programming, and so you can't do your little Jedi tricks on us cannabis people. So if you betray us, your politics ain't going to work. You're just going to be known as betrayers. And that's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under this public hearing for item 9D?
Oh, can I just add one more thing?
Uh, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
You concluded your remarks.
I grew up to get here today, on myself.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under this public hearing?
I've got a question on this.
Okay.
So my understanding of this is, basically, we're lumping marijuana smoking, vaping, we're restricting it to where it's currently restricted in places of tobacco. Is that correct? We're not doing anything outside of that. Because I've seen, I think, a lot of misinformation on the interwebs, where people are saying we're trying to ban all outdoor smoking, vaping, of marijuana. Hidden truth. All we're doing is saying, look, if you're not allowed to smoke a cigarette there, then you probably shouldn't be allowed to smoke marijuana at the same spot. So I just wanted to clarify that, make sure my assumptions were correct.
That's correct. Okay.
And I just had a clear, I, one question that came up, that someone reached out to me about, was why, and I, I know there, I got a bit of an answer, but just for educational purposes for the public, so why we aren't including tobacco vaping in that. If, like, some more information.
Yeah, it was just proposed as, just proposed as marijuana vaping, because the legislature has specifically said we can regulate that. We're going to look at the question of whether you can regulate and stop tobacco vaping on all city property. So that, that's why this was just marijuana. And I believe that's what the police department asked for.
Yes. This is only addressing the smoking and vaping of marijuana.
Okay. And that is just, it's a, the state, we're getting, it's the same issue with the firearms. We're getting in compliance.
Pretty much. There's a preemption on the regulation of, of smoking tobacco, and the smoking and vaping of marijuana, and they've allowed municipalities to enact ordinances that are in line with the state restrictions.
Well, that's, because that's one thing that I, when we had the presentation two weeks ago, it just didn't kind of click in my mind. Because I, if, especially, I know the, the science isn't all in on vaping, but in my mind, if, if we're, part of, you know, I don't, I don't partake in inhalants, but I know when I walk through a cloud of smoke, whether it's vapor, or just tobacco smoke, as like a person who's being, feels like they're being assaulted by, I, I just, I would, I would like to see if there's a possibility. So I'm glad you all are working on that, just to see if there's a way to put vaping tobacco in that as well. Just to kind of be a good neighbor to people, is sort of where I'm coming from. So I appreciate it.
This is the, this isn't the final hearing on this, right?
Great. This is just a public hearing. It would be considered potentially at the next meeting, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. I believe that concludes the public hearing regarding, regarding item 9D. We are now on item 9E1. This is the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures here listed, except for the one previously stricken. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding these dilapidated structures?
Yes. On 9E1F, I have asked to defer, and I would like to defer that for a couple of weeks, as I want to get in touch with the owner of the property. And I've also talked to, to the gentleman from the, from the office, our city staff, and we're going to work through that together, at least for the next couple of weeks.
Okay. So I'll take that as a motion to defer the item.
Please move to-
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9E1F is deferred for two weeks. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any of these items here? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt a resolution found at item 9E2, declaring that the structures are dilapidated, except for the one previously stricken and the one previously deferred.
The two of the res-
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9F1, public hearing regarding unsecured structures here listed, except for the ones previously stricken. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding these unsecured structures? Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and-
My name is Eva Summers, and this was property of my father's. He's now in a trust. But the property has been secured, and I have pictures. And he, the-
Which property is it?
I'm sorry, what?
Which property is it?
It's the 1238 Southwest 57th.
Okay, so item Q.
Yes. So the notice was for the detached garage, and I have pictures here, that it's been painted and, and cleaned and secured.
Chad Davidson, Code Enforcement Superintendent. The, the photos there, looks like they were taken at night. So it's really kind of hard to tell if it's completely secured or not. But we'll be glad to, to check that for you.
Okay. Yes. They, it was done recently, and then I work in Norman, so I drove, by the time I got there, it was dark. So this were the best I could do. But, I mean, it is completely secured. Everything's cleaned up, so.
So could we just defer that item and let you all?
We can. Typically, what we do, or what we've done in the past, is we've gone ahead, gone ahead and approved them, and then we'll go out and check it and verify that, that it's in compliance.
And it just wouldn't-
It just goes the way-
-go through that process. Okay.
You're good. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any other people wish to speak for any of the unsecured structures here listed?
I do have one question about item L. This property had come to my attention from a constituent reaching out, I believe, of a neighbor, neighboring property. And when I did some research, I discovered that the woman, Helen Marie Turner, who's listed as the owner, actually died in 2017. So I was curious, what happens when the, the current property owner that's listed is deceased, and doesn't, there doesn't appear to be any next of kin who's responding to anything related to the property?
Right. Well, we're obligated to notify the owner of record.
Right.
They haven't probated the case yet, so that's the owner of record. What we would do is, we would go ahead and have it secured. That way, people can't get into it.
Okay. Is there anything from our side that we can hurry, or like, make sure it's in probate, or make sure something's happening with it? Because I know the person who had reached out to me back months ago, had expressed that people are breaking in. And so, you know, it's been probably almost three years since the woman died, that I just want to make sure that it's not just sitting there getting lean, so that one day, it's, you know, hard for someone to-
We can definitely dig a little deeper and see what we can come up with.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this public hearing? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9F2, declaring that the structures are unsecured, except for the ones previously stricken.
The unsecured resul-
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to 9G1, public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for the ones previously stricken. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution found at 9G2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to 9H1. This is the second public hearing regarding an economic development agreement with Oklahoma Contemporary Arts Center, Inc. This was previously presented at our last meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding the item? Seeing none, the resolution is found at 9H2. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, authorizing and directing a general manager and or designated to negotiate an economic development agreement with Oklahoma Contemporary Arts Center, in an amount not to exceed $60,000.
The resolution.
Got a motion in a second to adopt the resolution found at 9H2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9I is a resolution approving Oklahoma City Zoological Park and Botanical Garden Admission and Membership Pricing Fee Increase, and I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, Dwight Lawson, our executive director of the zoo, is here to make a presentation on the increases in the fees.
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to give you a little bit of background on the proposed price- Thanks for the opportunity to give you a little bit of background on the proposed price changes. Get this pulled up. Just as... Some context, we anticipated a modest price increase this year with the 1920 budget. That was included in... For the last six months of the year. This was approved by the trust earlier this year and presented as part of our budget presentation here at council in the spring. Our current general admission price is $11 for adults, $8 for seniors and kids, and we're looking at doing a $1 increase on that. The main driver for this is the implementation of a compensation and classification study that we did last year and implemented in 2019 that added, we anticipated, and it did, add considerably to the operating cost. Retention in this tight labor market has been a challenge, and it's been about a decade since we've done a compensation study to really see where we were, so it was time to adjust a lot of those pay rates. Go ahead. Some additional context for this, over the last 22 years, we've had a modest... Several increases for a total of about $5, which is a pretty modest increase. During that time, attendance has grown substantially by about 350,000 people. We're now the largest cultural attraction in the state, right at a million in attendance every year. And along with that, operating and construction costs have gone up. Our operating budget is now about $8.7 million, higher than it was about two decades ago, and kind of industry average on zoo construction is now about $4 million an acre, which is pretty exorbitant, but that's what it is. We now serve more guests and member households from outside of Oklahoma City than from within, and our pricing is still lower than other accredited zoos and a lot of the local comps. And as we discovered the last time, we did a price increase, and every time we look at pricing, we really need to focus on access programs for underserved communities, essentially kind of any admission price is a deterrent for some, and so, we're looking for ways to make sure folks can get into the zoo and have that experience. And there's a lot on this slide, but basically, if you look at where people are coming from and what they're paying, kind of left to right on those pie charts, our overall attendance is roughly a third membership, a third general admission, and a third kind of other discount free admissions and a few other, you know, education programs and the like. And if you look at where they're coming from, that middle chart of those that are actually paying full price admission, that 35% of overall attendance, only 20% or 21% of those folks are from Oklahoma City. The rest are from the outlying areas and farther away. Likewise, to the far right, for membership, member households, we now see more of those from outside Oklahoma City at 61% than we do from inside the city itself. So, we're serving a broader audience than just the city. And if you look at our comparisons to other peer institutions, this is the 60... This is a benchmark study that the Association of Zoos and Aquariums does every other year, kind of our peer group, and you can see that at $11, our admission price is the lowest of anybody out there, and it's also significantly lower than the average adult admission price of $22 and 17 for children. And to put this in a little bit of perspective, three years ago, when we looked at this before, the average prices across the same peer set was $17 for adults and $12 for children. So, there's been a $5 increase in that average over that group in the last couple of years. And just some of the stars that are on there are to illustrate, these are a few other institutions that get significant municipal support. They're either state-run or city-run institutions, or they get some other form of funding. And you can see that kind of the top tier tends to be aquariums. They're a little bit more expensive, but in the rest of that mix, you can see that there's still quite a few that do receive some city support and are still significantly higher than where we are. If you look at our admission price relative to kind of the local peer group, there's quite a spread in admission costs for local attractions. We're kind of in the bottom tier of that group, and even if you expand this out beyond sort of the cultural and major attractions and includes for the more for-profit things, a main event, a movie ticket, some of the indoor climbing or trampoline type of experiences, this still pretty much holds true. They're all a little bit above where we currently sit today. Similar case with membership pricing. The Zoo Friends member categories are across the top there. You can see that they're lower than a lot of the regional zoos and some of the local attractions. The family membership is really the bread and butter. The vast majority of zoo members kind of across the board are in that category. The average for that peer group that I showed you before is $150, and you can see we're sitting well below that and below a lot of the local and regional attractions as well. And again, as we've looked at pricing and worried about access for all of the community, it's apparent that we need to rely on a variety of access programs to make sure people from underserved parts of the area can come. I think we've been pretty successful at this. We do a number... We have a suite of programs. The obvious one is a free day that we do every year. Last year, that saw... We saw more than 23,000 guests on that day. It was an interesting day to be at the zoo. We also do a Library Pass program where several years ago, the municipal library system produced a book, a children's book, about a visit to the zoo. We placed that locally for the first year, took it statewide the next year, and then more recently, we've added it to some of the tribal libraries, where you check out that book, and the receipt for that is good for free admission for four to the zoo. And you can see in the last year, we did 16,000... We saw 16,000 guests off of that program, and we're redoing it with a new book and a relaunch this year, so I expect that we'll see more. In addition, memberships, about half of the memberships were actually sold at a discount last year, many of those through a special promotion with Mathers Brothers Furniture, where they're at a very deep discount. And in addition, Zoo Friends does a Zoo Fund for Kids, a scholarship program to fund school and group visits to the zoo, as well as Zoo Mobile programs, where we can take programs out to schools and libraries and the like, and that saw 156 different schools or groups with 21,000, 21,500 kids benefiting from that program last year. And in addition to that, we offer free parking, which is increasingly unusual out there. We allow you to bring food and drink into the zoo. We'd love for you to spend more money inside, but we do offer that as well. And so, finally, the summary of what we're proposing is, again, a dollar increase for the general admission ticket categories, and you can see the membership categories, they've added some this year and changed the pricing, as you see with that summary. The Zoo Society Board approved those changes back in November, and again, the trust approved this addition for the back half of this year with our budget earlier this year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dwight?
Well, I don't have any questions. I do want to say, being a part of the zoo trust, obviously, we've learned about the significant impact of what this proposed change can be for some of our communities, but we are also hopeful as far as the access programs and the zoo fund that's impacted and has impacted so many schools in our community across the state. And I have also talked to the Oklahoma Zoological Society and Mr. Lawson about being very committed in my role with the zoo representing Ward 7 to ensure that we recruit more participation as far as the zoo fund and in those programs for our Oklahoma City Zoo, because it's very important for us to not create more barriers, but to also create, if we... Those opportunities for our young people to have access. So, again, I just wanted to make mention that I'm very committed to ensuring that we continue the program and increase participation for our young people at the same time, but thank you for all you all do, and the social media, I think, has really impacted the way people see the zoo in a different light. And being able to view a lot of those different activities that take place at the zoo, like a surgery or different things like that, because we're curious to know what happens when we look at the Oklahoma City Zoo. So, kudos, and, you know, obviously, it's needed, unfortunately, to say it's unfortunate, but that does speak to the impact of growing and growing in a good way.
Well, not to make it more competitive for Ward 7 schools, but if anybody would like materials about the scholarship programs or whatever to help push out, we'd be more than happy to share and have you guys make those contacts on our behalf.
I also wanted to make mention of one opportunity that you didn't mention, and I don't know... I don't want to get people's hopes up if you're not doing it again this year, but I know the past two years, you all have offered a ticket in the back of the Curbside Chronicle, I think in the November or December issue, and I hear from people that they will go seeking out vendors to buy up, like, 10 copies. So, that's another opportunity that people have to have something at maybe a lower cost to provide for their families. So, I just want to make mention of that, because I know that it is a hot item when it comes out every year.
Now, we enjoy doing that, and I'll give kudos to Greg for spearheading that program with the Curbside Chronicle.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Dwight. You're doing a great job, you and your team. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9J1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Major Scott Grubbs while he continues to require rehabilitation. I don't believe we need executive session. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9K1, resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Kenneth Holman while he continues to require rehabilitation. Don't believe we need executive session? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9L1, resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Major Jimmy Cruda while he continues to require rehabilitation. Don't believe we need executive session? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9M1, resolution considering the salary continuation request of Sergeant Jennifer Gulickers. Don't believe we need executive session? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9N1, a resolution considering the salary continuation request of Sergeant Zachary Miller. Don't believe we need executive session? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9O is an executive session to receive confidential communications from our attorneys to discuss the case of Carol V. City of Oklahoma City. Take a vote to go into executive session, although we will handle that at the conclusion of our other business.
item into executive session?
Got a motion to go into executive session on item 9O. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9P is an executive session to receive communications from our attorneys regarding the case Puente V. City of OKC. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will also handle that executive session at the conclusion of our other business. 9Q entered into executive session to receive confidential communications from our attorneys regarding potential participation in a federal products liability litigation.
Move the item into executive session.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that as well with the other two executive sessions at the conclusion of our other business. This brings us to 9R1, claims recommended for denial. We have items A through C. Don't believe we need executive session?
B was stricken.
Oh, and B was stricken. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak under this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Claims for denial.
Got a motion in a second to deny the claims. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 10A1, claims recommended for approval. Don't believe we need executive session, except for... I'm sorry, we don't need executive session, and we've got items A through E, but item B was previously stricken.
Claims for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11, let's handle the items on the agenda, then we'll go around the horseshoe. This is items from council. Item 11A, this is an ordinance on final hearing. We have heard a presentation, then we had a public hearing. This is regarding the concept of advertising on vehicles for hire. This is our third meeting, and we still have not received an answer to Councilman Griner's question as to why we ever had this ordinance in the first place. So...
I do have a question on this one. What... Just curious. I saw a segment on the local news, but what was the impetus for this ordinance change?
Yeah, so, the company that... Shuffle Company that approached me about generally our vehicles for hire ordinances worked with our legal department from... With, I believe it was Steve Kreese with the police department, first to get street legal, because they weren't originally included in the language to be under the definition of vehicles for hire, and then... So, their business model, I guess, is mostly on advertising, as a lot of transportation companies are. But the way that our ordinance was written, the definition of vehicles for hire had a lot of restrictions on how the... Or, I guess, the vehicle could advertise. So, and as far as we could tell, when I talked with legal, again, they didn't really have an understanding of why that was originally put in place, but it really restricted that the vehicle could only advertise for their company. And so, it was just, I requested legal to follow up, to change it, so that now it would include taxis and then these sorts of vehicles that could now advertise in these specific locations on their vehicle, something other than just their company.
So, to your knowledge, then, like, the current companies that operate here would support this as well?
Yeah, the... I haven't gotten any negative feedback. When I talked with legal and asked, like, do we see any, like, protest about this, the response was really that most of those transportation companies would actually really like to be able to advertise something other than their company, because it would open up another revenue source for them.
Does this include the triangle signs on the rooftop, or...
Can... Can we just speak to that?
That's an exception to the provision, right?
There's some language that's really particular about how taxis work.
So, the signs, there could be rooftop signs. They would require inspection by the police department to make sure that they are safe to be able to be attached appropriately and safely to the vehicle, but yes, signs on the top of the rooftop of these vehicles, as well as other motor vehicles for hire, would be allowed.
But that's already allowed, right? The triangle sign?
So, the rooftop signs are already allowed, but they would only, under our current ordinances, only be allowed for advertising the business that is the motor vehicle for hire company.
The rooftop sign cannot have third-party advertising today?
Correct.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Thank you.
Well...
I have a motion for approval.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, 11B, a resolution approving travel and reimbursement expenses for Councilwoman Jobeth Hammond to attend a tour of San Antonio's Restoration Center, February 10th through 11th in San Antonio. Obviously, we are planning to emulate that facility in MAPS 4. I assume that is the impetus for your trip.
Yes, this was at the invitation of Commissioner Carrie Blumer to attend this tour, and I believe they're covering... The county's going to cover a certain number of costs, just not the travel and lodging, so...
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with the required six votes. Now, we'll go around the horseshoe. Ward 1?
I'd like to wish everyone a happy new year. Happy new year to you. I have learned and is fully involved with the president of the community, and I have no other proof of doubt as to why I'm waiting. I want to thank the Asian District because they got some banners that say, "Happy New Year, Happy New Year, Happy New Year," to move in specifically. So, how the Asian District called Ward 2. I also wanted to speak briefly to you as well, because I've noted, Yona Premat is an MIT researcher and author of the blog Transport Politics, and he noted five things, observations about the state of transit in the United States and advise as we move into the implementation of MAPS 4 and its transit items, I thought we should look at this a couple of ways. in the United States, and I thought we should look at these a couple of these. His first observation is, number one, we're still building roads like there's no tomorrow. Fremark begins by noting that transit ridership is on the decline across the United States, even as it increases.
Oh, is that, thank you. That whole time? We can hear you. Make that a meme, everybody. Okay, thank you, my apologies for not turning on my mic. So then, first, let me go back to the Asian District, wish everybody Happy Lunar New Year. It's the year of the rats, they're known for quick wit, and maybe they're known for being a little bit quicker to turn on their microphones. And I also want to extend, again, a special thank you to Tune to Win with the Asian District and Public Works for getting their Lunar New Year banners along Classen Boulevard, those are available now. And then, to continue where I left off, we have an MIT researcher and author of the blog The Transport Politic, Yona Fremark, and he put together five observations on the state of transit in the United States, I just want to share two of them. Number one, he says, "We're still building roads like there's no tomorrow." Fremark begins by noting that transit ridership is on the decline across the United States, even as it increases in most of our peer countries. He attributes this decline in part to the simple fact that our government at all levels are pouring vastly more money into expanding road networks than improving transit. How much more? Now, I'm quoting from the study, quote, "Even as the country was adding 1,200 miles of expanded transit service, it added an estimated 28,500 new lanes of arterials, roadways, like interstates, highways, and four-lane-plus, quote, 'streets' that constitute many of our cities and suburban areas. This infrastructure is hostile to pedestrians and transit users, and likely to reinforce patterns of automobile dependency and sprawl. That's roughly 24 times as many new roadway miles as improved transit miles, so who can blame Americans for continuing to drive? Transit offerings simply have not kept up." Observation two, much is made by transit opponents, of which there are not so many in Oklahoma City these days, thank goodness, but much is made by these opponents of the supposed wastefulness of public transit spending. But how much does it all actually add up to? It turns out, the average American consumer contributed just $14.50, one more time, the average American consumer contributed just $14.50 in taxpayer dollars per year to transit expansion, and that was over the last decade. And that's about the cost of three lattes. Obviously, more money than that went to operating and maintenance costs for transit, funded both through taxes, fees, and direct rider fares, but let's put those numbers in perspective as Freeman does. Quote, "The average American consumer spent $8,427 on automobile transportation in 2016 alone." $14.50 investment from the average American in transit, we are spending $8,427 a month. Keep this in mind when the time comes to start talking about a dedicated transit tax, and that time will come. Americans spend more money on transportation than our peers in other wealthy countries with higher transit ridership, and that's just the private cost. So, it's something to keep in mind as we go forward with the implementation of bus rapid transit. Finally, I'd like to invite, and very importantly, in fact, I would say, I'd like to invite Jared Shider to come speak about the point-in-time count that will get underway this week, and I'll turn it over to Jared.
Jared Shider with the Planning Department, Homeless Services, we oversee and coordinate homeless services on behalf of the city. Part of that is planning the point-in-time count every year, which Councilman Cooper was nice enough to have us come up and speak about today. I think a lot of you, or most of you, may be familiar with what that is, but I'll just give you a brief overview. The point-in-time count is our annual homeless census, it's how we basically track what we're having, what our total population is, and kind of where we're having successes and where we need to focus resources. We're only required to do it every other year, we do it every year, because really, that's kind of where the usefulness of spotting your trends, otherwise you go two years at the area you may have a problem in without even knowing. We start planning this about six months out, the count starts at 3:30 in the morning this Thursday, and we always do it during the last week of January, we are required to do it then because they think that's the coldest week, although it looks like it's going to be actually quite warm for it this week. But we start at 3:00 AM, volunteers start with morning outreach by going to the homeless alliance, and start by going out to camps, and then we have counts all day at different sizes until probably about 8:00 or 9:00 PM that night. And we will be there all day for the whole thing. So, that's both looking forward to doing it and looking forward to getting it over with, but this is really important because it's part of, aside from the census coming up, also how we know how much funding we're going to get for other resources, it shows our need. And I think a lot of you know that while our total numbers have come down, our street homeless numbers in the past couple of years have come up, and last year they were still about the same height they were two years ago. Hoping to see that come down, but the way things are looking, they very well may not. So, but as a result of that, that's how we knew where to put more resources and outreach this year. So, if you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to take them.
I do have one question, I noticed that the contingency plan will be active for Wednesday night because of the temperatures, will that affect the count on Thursday?
Actually, the Wednesday, they're not open because of temperatures on Wednesday, we always open them the night before because we're allowed to count for 24 hours, and so we start counting at those winter beds on that night.
Okay, okay.
It's much easier to count people in the shelter than it is on the street because people are easy to find. And so, we will be counting that night, and that's the only reason those beds are going to be open that night. It's actually, I think, supposed to be 40-something degrees that night, so it will affect it by giving us hopefully a better count.
Yeah, well, that's what I was concerned, I was like, well, wait, if they're, we're asking, did you sleep outside last night, and a bunch of people stayed in the winter shelter, I was concerned that we wouldn't have a really accurate count.
Well, for us, see, the way we do that is, we take those numbers and we're required to report them to HUD as being in shelter that night. However, since they're only one night stays in the winter beds, for our own personal count, we consider them to basically part of our unsheltered count, because otherwise they would not have been in shelter.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
I really just want to thank you for all the work that you do.
Oh, no problem, no problem at all, it's something we enjoy, actually. See y'all later.
And then, relatedly to that, and it's going to be a conversation, I know, about operations of transit too, and to the implementation of bus rapid transit, the first bus rapid transit on the northwest side, but something, you know, I'm very excited about the potential in MAPS-4 with the housing component, and being able to leverage those funds to address the housing crisis we have in a lot of ways here in the city. One thing I would like to put on our radar is what kind of operation cost it's going to take for an outreach team to actually go out and connect the folk who are in our encampments or wherever throughout the city to this housing as we start bringing it online? Because my understanding is we don't necessarily have that staff right now, and I'm deeply concerned, because I believe so strongly in housing first, getting these folk in housing so then we can address, you know, mental health or substance abuse or breaking that cyclical poverty, that cyclical homelessness, but if we can't connect those folks to that housing first, then I really, really worry about that, and so I, and it's only now coming to my mind, so I just wanted to put that on our radar, and I feel like councilperson.
So, I will, yes, I have a little information about that, so there are a few organizations that do have outreach positions coming online, including homeless alliance, mental health association, and then I believe there's a, Jared might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but I know there's a youth outreach component that's happening as well, not that we don't need more, because we do have the homeless outreach team through the police department, but I know that a lot of the work that the outreach teams through the social services will be able to do, I believe will be much more effective, just because they can build long-term relationships, and, you know, as great as our homeless outreach team with the police department is, they're still wearing uniforms, and that can be really intimidating to a lot of folks, so, you know, they've done really great work, but I'm hoping that with these new ones coming online, that can start happening, but yes, we need more of them, for sure, because they're going to be getting calls to come, go, just all, they're mainly focused around downtown, but we know that there are camps all throughout the city that really need that long-term relationship building and outreach, so, appreciate it.
Well, thanks for, to Jared and staff and advocates for educating me on this, it's been a process to learn. And related to transit and housing, but transit specifically, including here, I really want to thank Jason Fairbrush and Embark for participating in the MLK Day Parade yesterday. I asked them as a COPPA trustee a few years ago to join us in that parade, and they have with bells and whistles, and it's been great, and knowing that according, if you listen to Henry Louis Gates Jr., the director of African and African-American Studies at Harvard, in his PBS documentary, Many Rivers to Cross, he will tell you that when Rosa Parks sat down in that seat on a segregated city bus in Montgomery, Alabama, a revolution began. Like, that word just clicked, like, a revolution, you know, and you think of the American Revolution, the French Revolution, you think of Mahatma Gandhi, and this woman simply saying, "I deserve a seat on this bus just as much as anybody else does, regardless of the color of my skin," and that, of course, gave way to a year-long boycott of the Montgomery Bus System where black folk walked to work for one year, led by a young 26-year-old from Atlanta, Martin Luther King Jr. I, that is incredible to me, and I love telling that story to my middle school students because I'm like, he's 26, he's just, he's not that much older than y'all. So, yeah, I really want to thank Jason and Embark for participating in that, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to express thanks to Elaine Lyons of the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, many of you were in the banquet last week to honor achievement during the past year, and they selected as Citizen of the Year our own Sergeant Echols, who performed on the musical and entry for us, and it was a great time, and again, for the efforts that they make in bringing our city together, the South Oklahoma City Chambers to be praised. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, first, I'd like to honor the memory of Mr. Carl Carbon, and Mr. Carbon was the owner of Carbon Realty, which was delightfully placed on 36th and Kelly in our community, where he had been a realtor for over 50 years, and he was laid to rest at the age of 91 on this past Friday, and last year, the February 23rd edition of The Oklahoman honored his legacy of 90 years and the hard work and also the barriers that he had to cross in order for him to be an African-American realtor in Oklahoma City. And I bring him up because he also served as Ward Seven Planning Commissioner in the age of Councilman Goree James. So, a lot of his family member, who I'm a friend, I'm friends with one of his grandsons, he didn't really, he didn't know that, and I was headed to the funeral, and I was telling Ms. Debbie, our lovely Chief of Staff who knows everybody in the city, and I said, I told her I was about to go to this funeral, she said, "He was a planning commissioner." I said, "You have got to be kidding me." So, just to speak of the legacy of Mr. Carbon, that speaks to the things that he was able to do and move Northeast communities within Ward Seven forward, not only as a planning commissioner, but also when it was asked how many people had purchased homes from Mr. Carbon, half the room raised their hands in that funeral, so that speaks to the impact of being able to sell and also being able to serve in your community as well. Some other things I wanted to make mention, I have a couple of things, the Oklahoma Youth Literacy Program, they have a read and eat program with free books and light homework assistance, and that's Monday through Friday, begins at 3:30 every day, and I know they're asking for volunteers and students, so if you know anyone in the area of 3663 North Lottie, they are very willing to assist, and there's a website as well, okylpokc.org, and that's running through the end of the school year. So, thank you to those who are a part of rebuilding and reshaping our young people in our communities. And last week, I did attend the Millwood How Can We Be Healthy Fall Project exhibition, and I want to thank our Waste Management, because I just asked for a favor for coloring books and different things, because I had a group of first graders that wanted to talk about recycling, and they want a recycling program at Millwood. So, they researched the topic, they asked me to come in and talk about recycling with them, and they were extremely excited about the coloring books and ways that they could educate the community and the school on recycling, and at their exhibition, they had a petition that they asked people to sign, in the effort of them being able to recycle at the school. So, I know there will be more conversations about recycling and conservation, and that's obviously a continued effort that we'd like to, I would like to continue to focus on in our communities of Ward Seven, sustainability, conservation, environmental justice, social justice, all of those different things that encompass health and well-being for our communities. And I know we're having a Descendants of Freedmen Association meeting, I was told, on January 25th at 1:00 PM at the Faith Memorial Baptist Church, and as we talk about those things, I also want to honor the legacy of Dr. King, and I know yesterday we did attend the prayer breakfast, I was able to attend that, and congratulations to Reverend Reed for receiving that Clara Luper Community Service Award, and he made mention of a story of how he met Dr. King, and he spoke about just him being, his presence, and I don't think I've ever heard that story before from Pastor Reed, and to have people that can still speak in essence of, of the likes of Dr. King that they have met, sat with, broke bread, and had a conversation about moving communities forwards, obviously, that speaks volumes. And with that, yesterday, I had previously been asked to participate in Lawton, they have a celebration in honor of Dr. King, so I did travel yesterday afternoon to represent Oklahoma City, and sat with the mayor of Lawton, Mayor Stan Booker, as well as the speaker who spoke by the name of Benjamin Jealous, he's a former NAACP president, and he was the youngest to serve at the age of 35, from 2008, I believe, to 2013. But the title of the speech and efforts were The Forgotten Origins and Consequences of Race in America. So, I was asked to be on that panel discussion, and also attended the banquet where he spoke more in depth about the forgotten origins and consequences of race in America, so I commend our community and our city and everyone that participated in the parade yesterday, representing on our city level, and that's why a lot of people didn't see me at the parade, because I was representing our city in Lawton for the Dr. King celebration there, but it was an honor to be there and serve and represent Oklahoma City. And if you had not heard, OU Health Science and African-American Student Association, they're having their Martin Luther King celebration on the 29th of this month, and they will have Dr. King's daughter, Bernice King, she will be presenting at noon, so the address there is 940 Northeast 13th Street, and I know the mayor was with us on this past Sunday, The Challenges Beyond the Dream, for the 51st Anniversary Celebration that happened at St. John, and there were so many interfaith-based churches and just everyone in general, and if you did not know, we talked about it last year, but this is the oldest MLK celebration in our nation, and we celebrate it in Oklahoma City, this type of service, and the very first service was held by Reverend W.K. Jackson, and he asked Martin Luther King Senior to speak at the first one. So, that's how we began this 51 years prior. So, as we continue our days of service, this is a week of service for OGME, and I'm very grateful to them for what they're doing in our community. They are partnering with the Urban League to weatherize the Mount Olive senior cottages for the affordable housing for our seniors, and we, I was there yesterday with the volunteers from OGME, and just the bright faces that live, our seniors that live in those cottages, we're extremely excited to have their homes weatherized for their... were extremely excited to have their homes weatherized, for their bills to be able to be lower and lessened, for them to be able to do the things that they need to do in their communities. And if you do not know, there is a Silver Energy Program that's offered by OGME for residential energy efficiency choices designated, and it's, it will increase comfort, safety, and savings, and this is achieved through their weatherization program. So, if anyone wants information on that, I would encourage you to please look up OGME, and this is for customers age 60 and above and an annual income of $60,000 or below. So, just those bright faces of our seniors being taken care of, it means so much, because when I was talking to a lot of, one gentleman in particular, he said, "I am so excited that I'm able to receive this weatherization for my, for my home and my community." So, thank you, OGME, for what you do and your service on, in a week of service and not a day off. And as you were talking about Rosa Parks, it made me think about Claudette Colvin, who was a 14-year-old young lady, who, this happened months prior to Ms. Rosa Parks, same incident on a bus, 14 years old. But because she was young, and I believe she was pregnant, they, they said the NAACP decided that she was not a good candidate for, for this effort. And one day, Rosa Parks did get tired, and she sat down, but it was in the efforts of a young lady, a teenager, by the, by the age of your students, that started that effort. So, with that, I'll close with this. It's over 100 days of that broken promise, empty promise, we're still waiting on a grocery store, and someone reached out to me because of a news article that was published and said, "Please stop saying," and tell the news to stop saying, "We don't have a grocery store in Northeast Oklahoma City," because we do, we have an Otwell's. So, if you have not been to Otwell's, I challenge you all, as I've challenged you before, to go to the community to understand what is still there. And I'm not saying it's there because it's adequate, it's there because that's what our community has to use, that's their, their only option in order for them to decide what other strategic moves they have to make to have their immediate needs met when it comes to groceries and grocery options. So, I'll end with that, but Otwell's, which is also known as Sunshine Market, is waiting for your local dollars. Thank you.
All right. That concludes items from council. Now, we're on item 12, City Manager Report.
Yes, we have several presentations on today. The first one we have up is Kathy O'Connor with the Alliance for Economic Development is going to give us an update on the Omni Hotel. City's partnered with Omni to bring the Convention Center Hotel here, has a significant investment there, just to give us an update on the construction and where they're on their progress.
Good morning. We wanted to take a few minutes to give you a little bit of a construction update on the Omni Hotel. I know you all hear periodically about updates on the Convention Center, but we wanted to let you know that the hotel is moving along very well. Also, this morning, I'd like to introduce Ryan Eschelman with GSB. The Alliance hired GSB to help with project management for the hotel, and they also help with overall project coordination between all the different construction projects that are going on in that area right now. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Good morning to you all. As Kathy mentioned, GSB was engaged by the Alliance as an extension of their staff to help administer the terms of the redevelopment agreement and to oversee the progress on the project and also to assist in what is essentially over a half a billion dollars' worth of construction that's happening in very close proximity, just east of the park. As you all recall, the hotel itself is six, over 600,000 square feet, 17 levels plus a valet parking garage below ground and over 600 keys. The hotel began construction 16 months ago. The structure was topped out earlier this fall and will complete at the end of this year. We've received substantial rain in the progress, but the project is still fully on schedule due to adjustments in the staffing and workday, weekend workdays and other measures. Just a reminder of the design itself, the hotel includes the tower, which will front the Boulevard, and the podium, which contains most of the meeting and public space atop the podium, is a pool deck looking out over the park, and a lot of active food and beverage elements engaging both Robinson and the Boulevard, activating the streetscape. The main entrance itself faces the Boulevard and the arena, and will include a vehicular drop-off shown in those renderings, occupies the entire block between the Boulevard and Fourth and Robinson and Broadway adjacent to the new Convention Center. The design obviously includes substantial public space, lobby experience on the ground floor, lobby bars, and substantial meeting space, nearly, actually over 50,000 square feet of suitable meeting space in the podium as well, including grand and junior ballrooms and other breakout and support spaces. There are also several food and beverage opportunities, including a three-meal restaurant adjacent to the lobby, a coffee shop convenient to access to the Convention Center, and a steakhouse, and of course, 605 guest rooms throughout the tower. You can see an example of what those will look like here. Just for an update on progress, the building is almost completely dried in, so you'll see the full facade enclosure on the tower, putting the last elements of glazing in. You'll see the full roof in place on the podium, work ongoing on the facade of the podium, working around the entire city block. One of the tower cranes will be coming down shortly, and those will begin to disappear from the skyline over the next six months as the work on the tower is completed. Whole series of activities that are ongoing, won't go through those in detail, but obviously the work is moving inside the building largely, and as you can imagine, the guest rooms are being completed up the tower, so if you go into the lower-level guest rooms, there substantial progress, and the upper levels are still being framed, completing the framing for the cooling tower, putting, putting the pool and the rooftop deck in place. I mentioned the last components of the facade, so when these windows, when these windows go in in these locations and a couple of locations on the tower, the building will be fully conditioned. Thankfully, we've had a very mild winter thus far, so it's been really favorable for construction progress. Inside the building, on the public levels, you can see drywall, the, put in place, the rough end, the mechanicals are in, so there'll start to be finished spaces in the coming months on those lower levels. You can see the lobby and the entertainment bar, elevated pool bar, the elevator's being put in place. And as I mentioned, on the lower level, the guest rooms are really starting to take shape. You can see tile, you can see paint, wall baseboard, floor finishes are going in as well. The, the project itself employs on a weekday average over almost 500 people that are on site each day. Even on Saturdays, there'll be close to 300 people, just last month. Very safe job, congratulations to Brassfield and Gore and their team, only minor kind of first aid injuries to date, lacerations and, you know, and injuries for a day clinic, no lost time injuries, so they're working hard to continue that safety record that they're very proud of. Thirty-four contractors on site on the December work report, which includes 15 Oklahoma contractors that contribute to the project. Overall, it's a $200 million construction project, and the trust has completed its entire contribution as of November, so those funds have been expended, those reimbursement requests will cease, and the balance of the construction costs are borne by Omni. So, that's a quick overview. We'll continue to support the Alliance in overseeing this work through the conclusion of the year, and it's an exciting year as the Convention Center and the hotel and the parking garage and numerous other projects come online, and, and congratulations to the first completed project in that district, the Fairfield Inn, which is just east of this complex. They opened just last month, so construction, lots going to happen in 2020 to start to see this district come to, to mature and come to fruition. I welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thanks. Next up, we have a presentation on the City Council Priority on Developing a Transportation System that Works for All Residents, and this will include Eric Winger, Jason Fairbrush, and Jeff Butler, will all have portions of this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're pleased to present the next update of the City Council Priority, Develop a Transportation System that Works for All Residents, and as City Manager mentioned, we're going to Triple Team this one, and I'll kick off this morning. When we look at, at this measure, and again, as we look for a system that gets people where they need to go and connecting residents and becoming more pedestrian and cyclist-friendly, you'll see this was a focus of the City Council, and so as we go through the different measures that each of the departments is using for leading for results and our strategic business planning, you'll see some of those highlights, outlines, and our progress to date. For Public Works, we have two of those strategic measures, the first being the percent of residents satisfied with the condition of city streets, and the second, number of miles of trails and sidewalks that are constructed. So, we've continued to report our, our history, I'm going back to fiscal year 2014, and this goes back to the resident survey, so the percent of residents satisfied with the condition of city streets, and notably, we did decline over several years, but we started seeing a slight increase starting in fiscal year 18. Now, this last resident survey that we received, we didn't see a notable increase. Fortunately, we also didn't see a decrease, and I would take that kind of as a positive. But again, we continue to put a lot of new construction, new streets, new resurfaced streets and roadways throughout Oklahoma City, so we are expecting this number to start increasing just at any time. When we look at the condition of streets, and I'm going to actually report on this in another update this morning, talking a little bit more specifically about PCI and Payment Condition Index ratings, you see that we've continued to increase about a point each year. And so, again, as we continue to improve city streets, we are actually seeing that through a numeric measurement, but we're also seeing that on the roadways. We're seeing a lot more smooth travel and, and less disruption to our transportation system. This is a PCI map, and of course, this is the entire city. The areas of green are the areas that we were focused on, on improving during that year. We're able to fast-forward that map to 2019, and you're going to find, and as we get ready to change this slide, you're going to see the intensity of the green just much bigger, more, much more broad. But again, as we continue to implement programs like Better Streets, Safer Cities, as we work towards resurfacing those streets, and we're having a greater impact across the city, and so this, as we continue to track, we think that this map will show a lot more data in the future as we go year to year moving forward. One of the next measures is the not, is the miles of street improvements, and again, historically, you could see that we had lower numbers, and generally, this was just because of the limitations either on the bond issue or just of a less of focus on resurfacing, more of a focus on widened streets. But in just a few short, few years before 2019, with the passage of Better Streets, Safer City, and also the, the addition of the sales tax, you can see the number of miles of city streets has dramatically increased this past year, so with 111 miles of street improvements completed. We can break those down by the funding source, and so this also shows the difference between the bonds and the sales tax, and again, you can see we're very bond-reliant in previous years, but these past two fiscal years, 18 and 19, you can see that we've been able to accommodate additional dollars into the system, which again, attributes to the additional miles that you're actually seeing into construction now. So, the Better Streets, Safer City program is, is much to, to be to all the successes that we're seeing. Moving to the miles of trails and sidewalks constructed, again, another mode of transportation, another one of strategic goals and, and measures of, of the City Council. Sidewalks is in the dark green, trails is in the light green, and again, as we continue to track, the biggest thing that you'll see in fiscal year 17, and you may question, "Why was that year so great?", that was Maps 3. So, when Maps 3 made its large investment into trails and sidewalks, we saw that initial surge. It's declined somewhat, but I would say that the bond issue, Better Street Sales Tax, and also the new Maps 4 will have additional sidewalks, so we should see these numbers actually begin to increase again as we implement those additional projects. And then I've got three last slides, and so as we look at the city as a whole, we're looking at construction that's either underway or complete, so this is a little bit historical, but is also current, but this is the street project citywide, whether they be residential, widening, street enhancements, or resurfacing that's been accomplished in the past several years. And so, looking forward, we're going to continue to add to this map continued roadway improvements. We look at bike and trail projects, bike is in orange, trail is in green. Again, these are completed projects as we've launched forward, either with Maps 3, Better Streets are now into the bond issue, but again, continuing to build those network of systems throughout Oklahoma City. And then this last one is the sidewalks, and again, we have a lot of funding opportunities for these, and you'll see that these range from Maps 3, which we showed, but also fund balance, sales tax, and bond issue, that we've made a huge impact across Oklahoma City. Not that the work is done, obviously, continued sidewalk projects planned in the future, but we'll continue adding those completed sidewalk projects to this map going forward. So, with that, I'm going to just pause on the Public Works portion and ask if you have any questions. There are two other follow-ups to this part of the strategic planning, which we'll get to next, but if any questions on Public Works, I'd be happy to answer those now.
I do have a question, so a few weeks ago, maybe months, running the other, we had a meeting to talk about PCI and just dig into that a little bit more. I know I asked this question in that meeting, but I'd be curious if you could speak to, because, so contrary to what people might assume, I do drive once a week. I drive to Tulsa for work, because as Councilman Cooper alluded, there are no other options, so we're sort of stuck with what we have. So, I drive to Tulsa once a week, and I am shocked at the condition of their roads, like, so when I hear people in Oklahoma City complain about roads, I'm like, "Have you been to Tulsa?", because it's bad. And, and, but also, when I get on the highways here, like on the interstates, I see, I think, "Oh, I hear, I get what people are talking about." And not that, you know, some of our city streets, I, you know, know they need attention, but I'm curious, you know, if, if we perceive that when people are filling out that survey about the condition of our streets, if they're thinking also about our interstates and some of the other things that might be contrib, you know, because I just think, when I look at our PCIs, we are quite better than a lot of other cities in the area, so I'm just curious if you could speak to that.
So, we agree, and I think it does take some traveling to see that we're maybe not as bad as, as some other cities may, maybe as well. The resident survey was a challenge, it is something that in years past, it had a single measure of, of what do you feel of city streets in Oklahoma City? A few years ago, we broke that into arterial and residential, trying to get an idea of, is it your neighborhood street, or is it some of the larger streets? It doesn't have a category for highway, but we are continuing to look at the next survey to see what opportunities we can to make sure that the questions are asked and to try to be a little more specific. So, each year, we'll review that.
The ratings are still low, but actually, when you get into the specifics of neighborhood streets or arterial streets, the ratings are actually higher if you just say generally, "What do you think about streets?" So, we give you the, the feeling that some of that's incorporated, but it's hard to know what someone's thinking when they're looking, and they just tie all the streets together generally and think of ours.
And I've got another presentation this morning, if we have time, but I'm going to get a little bit more detail about the Payment Condition Index, what it really means, and then I've got some additional data I can show you in just a few minutes, too. Thank you. So, I think up next, we've got Jason Fairbrush.
Thanks.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jason Fairbrush, Public Transportation and Parking Director. I know our department looks forward to this opportunity each year to provide City Council with a little update on really what it is that we do on a day-to-day basis and how it supports the Council Priority to develop a transportation system that works for all of our residents. In terms of Council Priorities, there's three specific priority indicators that we look at, that we are responsible for on the transit side of things. One is bus riders per weekday service hour, total weekday service hours provided, and then average weekday frequency. And I'll touch on each one of those along with some additional metrics to give you a sense particularly of where we're going with our ridership on some of our service areas. So, the first Council Priority indicator we'll look at is our riders per service hour. And just a quick note, on service hours, when we talk about service hours in the transit business, that is any hour of the day that a bus is on the street, taking our customers where they need to go. So, with 48 to 49 buses providing service during the day, during our peak time, one hour of the day translates to 48 or 49 service hours. So, that's, that's where these numbers come from. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we look at ridership lots of different ways, but we like to look at riders per service hour for these purposes, because it does give us the best basis for comparing ridership over a period of time, especially when you make changes, for example, to the number of services, service hours that are available. And then finally, this slide here also looks at really just focusing in on our weekday rides. That is when we have the most buses providing service, and that is when our system is most heavily used. We kind of believe it to be the best indicator of ridership or of the overall system. So, you can see in FY '19, we finished at 16, just barely So, you can see in FY19, we finished at 16, just barely over 16 riders per service hour compared to our target of 18. And FY19 does show like the third consecutive year of a slight decline in our riders per service hour. There's, you know, several reasons for this. One is, as mentioned earlier, the transit industry nationwide is seeing some declines in ridership. So, that could be one, and there's some theories on, lots of theories on why that is. But then, also, I think locally, we have to remember that over the last three years in particular, we've given our customers more options for traveling, right? So, whereas three or four years ago, we may have had a certain group of our customers that were really confined to being able to use the bus on that Monday through Friday time period. Now, with five-night routes and Sunday service, there's a few more options. So, I think anecdotally anyway, we could say, and I'm convinced that at least part of that ridership is possibly choosing to ride at a different time. All right. So, the next slide we have for you here is our cumulative ridership. And although our Monday through Friday riders per service hour is declining, if you look at all of the public transit trips we provide cumulatively as an agency, you can see that in FY19, we actually provided over 3.3 million trips. Now, that's all modes, that's bus, that's streetcar, that's our senior services, that's our paratransit service. But suffice it to say, FY19 was the largest year we've had in terms of cumulative riderships, at least over the last six years. And I will mention that for FY19, remember, the streetcar and Sunday bus service were really launched halfway through the year. So, if you, you know, annualize those two modes, or that new Sunday service, I should say, the numbers could perhaps be even higher than the 3.3. And we'll look forward to seeing where we end up in FY20. All right. So, looking at our night service, and again, this is areas where council has invested resources in the bus service, both nights, Sundays, and holidays. We thought we'd take a look at our night service and give you a sense of the ridership there. In FY19, we provided over 107,000 trips with our five-night routes. That's about a 12% increase from where we were in FY18 of just over 96,000. And then, again, in terms of like, how many people are using the night service? We have five routes, and we average anywhere from 350 to 500 trips per weekday evening with those five routes. And then, looking at our Sunday service, and again, thank you to council and the CAPP Board of Trustees for allowing us to really make this momentous shift in our service offering, and that is provide Sunday service, something we hadn't done for, or we hadn't been able to accomplish for decades. It really is truly making a difference for, I believe, our community and our customer base. And we know that really by looking at the numbers. And what we have here is a full 12 months. I know the reporting period is through fiscal year 19, but we thought since this was a new service, we'd look at a full 12 months of Sunday ridership. And we're averaging over 3,600 trips on any given Sunday. And when we first launched Sunday service, we were trying to determine, well, you know, how would we gauge if it's successful? And we thought, well, if we can provide half the amount of trips on a Sunday, customer trips that we do on a Saturday, we would gauge that as a successful launch. And that's based primarily off the fact that for our Saturday service, we typically provide about half of what we do during the weekday. Well, when you look at these numbers, our Sunday service ridership is about 75% of some of our higher Saturdays. And then, if you just took an average of all of our Saturdays, it's actually about 85% of what our Saturday ridership is. So, again, at least our takeaway from that is our Sunday ridership has surpassed our initial expectations in that there's more than half of that ridership we experience on a Saturday occurring on a Sunday. And then, finishing up with the ridership portion of the presentation, we'll look at OKC Streetcar. I know we spent a lot of time talking about the ridership on OKC Streetcar, but again, looking at a 12-month period, and this excludes our launch of December, where we had, I believe, 70,000-plus trips. If you look at just the last 12 months, we've provided 401 total trips. You can see we're averaging over 33,000 trips during the month. And then, our weekend riders per service hour, I'll point out, is about 25. And just, you know, again, looking back at what we did with the bus service overall at about 16, you can see that the weekends, there's really some heavy utilization of the streetcar service on the weekends. And then, the next piece of ridership that I wanted to mention, it's not in the presentation, it did occur in FY20, but just as a reminder, you know, council-funded holiday bus service in this last budget, and I'm pleased to report that our first Christmas operating bus service, we provided over 2,500 trips on our fixed route service, and I believe nine total paratransit trips. And those are our customers that, you know, really aren't able to drive and are not able to use our fixed route system. So, I thought you might benefit from an update on how our first Christmas holiday went with Embark Bus Service. All right. So, shifting to the next council priority, this is weekday service hours. And you know, there's not a lot to talk, not a lot to talk about on this bar graph because basically, this is our weekday service hours, right? And as we've acknowledged, most of the investment that council has made in the public transit system, bus in particular, has been night service, weekend service. So, those investments aren't really reflected here. But what you see is FY14, when we rebranded our bus system, we had about 143,000 service hours. FY15, we added some frequency. This is where we got all but three routes on 30-minute frequencies. And then, for our weekday service, we've remained relatively stable with about 160 or so thousand service hours per year. Any fluctuation that you see there is attributable to the number of weekdays in any given year. And then, finally, looking at average daytime frequency, the last council priority indicator, again, a very similar story to what we looked at in terms of service hours because it's more service hours that gets you better frequency. So, again, looking at just our weekday frequency, you can see before, looking over on the left-hand side of the slide, you can see before we made our system improvements, our average frequency was anywhere from 43 to 53 minutes. We were able to reduce that to just under 36. And then, we've been stable here at just under 35 over the last several years, again, as we've tended to focus on night service and weekend service. And then, finally, last slide for you. I wanted to include this because, you know, we see the numbers here, we see our frequency for our system. We know as a transit provider, you know, we have certainly a long way to go. We're working at our plan every chance we get. Thanks to the council, we've been able to make incremental improvements. But at the same time, I think it's important, particularly for anybody seeing the presentation maybe for the first time today, just to revisit and see, well, where did we come from? And so, again, in FY14, that was when we were able to rebrand and relaunch our bus system. We've spent FY15 through FY19 continuing to enhance that service with night routes, with additional frequency on day routes. FY19, as I mentioned, we launched Sunday service. Our first year of streetcar, first calendar year of streetcar, just finished up. And then, what's not on the slide here is just a reminder again that we are continuing to work on the city's first bus rapid transit. In fact, we had a very productive internal workshop last week that is taking us past what we call, you know, kind of that first task 1A of the preliminary design. So, again, thank you for all your support on that. Be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, I thank you for that. I was curious, with the riders per service hour kind of as the measurement, so, just to clarify, that's just weekday service?
Yes.
Okay. So, would it make sense going forward, trying to, because it, like you said, to me, it makes sense that when people have more options, maybe, you know, they're not taking it at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, but they're going to hop on the night service because it's now an option for an 8:00 shift or something? Does it make sense for us to tweak that measurement that we're measuring by? And if so, what would that be?
Yeah, I think it does. And I think one opportunity to do that might be the next time council formally visits the council priorities. Because keep in mind, we're measuring, you know, kind of those specific priorities that were set. And when those were set, we were primarily focused on our weekday ridership. So, yeah, as our system has evolved, I think it probably would make sense to revisit those indicators and look at just measuring overall riders per service hour regardless of time of day.
Okay. Thank you.
First, thanks for, you know, working with your staff to bring us where we are. I mean, 1964, '65, I believe, was the last time we had Sunday bus service until council approved and Embark, working with CAPP, made Sunday bus service a reality again. I want to go back to that MIT researcher. So, I think, because I think this is some good news for us. He says, he gives us some advice going forward. He says, quote, "Every reasonably-sized city in the country should be identifying," ready for this, "corridors for bus rapid transit, reallocating street space for that purpose, and ceasing roadway expansion. The speed of implementing such improvements has been far too slow, given the poor quality of most bus service throughout the country and the relatively low cost of making such changes. But that requires cities to take seriously their responsibility to find the means to get people out of their cars. It requires activists to make the case that the era of automobile dominance must come to an end." So, Klassen and Northwest Expressways are two major automobile corridors. I think having a bus rapid transit system there is, I mean, I think MIT is a pretty reasonably credible source of information, and they're telling us that this is the right path. So, I'm really glad that once more you, I think I want to single out Larry Hopper on that for working to get that grant for the BRT, and then everybody who worked to get the next two rounds of BRT and MAPS 4. And of course, that's going to mean, we're going to have to talk about operations costs at some point for these things, too. But I just think we've got to figure that out. Jason, if you were going to expand night service even more, and by more, I mean, two questions. One, are there other corridors that you've seen through the research where people, where those needs are there in terms of employment, you know, et cetera? And later, like, the existing night service, is there anywhere where you would say, we should try and make that later at night?
Well, there's a, so, there's a lot of, no, no, there's a lot of opportunity for expanding night service. I mean, when you look at just our basic routes and the fact that we really only have five of our routes out there right now, you could, I mean, we could come up easily with another five. And then, I think it would just be a matter of sitting down with staff and reviewing some of our ridership and analyzing the trip generators and kind of prioritizing those. So, my recommendation would be, there's certainly, I mean, there's certainly places we could expand that night service. We'd probably want to prioritize it. In terms of keeping the buses out any later, you know, expanding the service span, if you will, I think based on our customer feedback, what we hear from our annual rider surveys, we're not hearing so much of keep the buses out even later. What we are really hearing is, we just want more service at night. So, again, just staff's general first recommendation would be, let's just continue to build out what we have and what we've established.
Yeah, thanks for that. I'm really intrigued by Northwest 23rd Street. You know, I live in Paseo, my very best friend lives in Crestwood, and that feels like a gulf of space, and it's really, really not ultimately. I mean, I biked through the neighborhoods, too, where he is. And he was having a Christmas party on a Saturday recently, and I was like, well, I'll just take advantage of the Embark Night Service. And then, I realized that it's Monday through Friday. And when I think of everything from, you know, right on that Clara Loop corridor, all the way out to, you know, the furthest western boundaries of Oklahoma City on 23rd Street, I just see so many opportunities for people to be able to hop on the bus from the neighborhoods along there, go to Queen of Sheba, go to, you know, Tower Theater. And that would be something I would like for us to consider as we look at signal prioritization in MAPS 4, trying to get that frequency a little bit increased on 23rd Street, and maybe seeing what we could do, if at all possible, to get that bus running till 2:00 in the morning, considering all the bars and restaurants that are along that corridor that have come back to life. And if not that, at the very least, Saturday and Sunday, having that bus run more frequently and later, because I believe it's every hour on the weekend. But again, this is not, this is not me being critical. This is literally me looking at where we've come and seeing the possibilities going forward. So, thank you.
I just wanted to express appreciation because I'm not sure, I'm sure in some aspects, those numbers were included in here. But due to our ask of Embark to provide and help with transportation for our community to get to a grocery location, that matters. And being able to have access for our community is tremendous, especially during these times. And I know the ridership hasn't been as heavy as we would like, but to have the option, obviously, is what is important. And it speaks to being able to reach these goals during these fiscal years of being able to take care of each other. So, I appreciate you again for all your work, and especially when I called, you said, what can we do when we implemented that plan. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Jeff Butler will finish up the presentation. And again, this is trying to look at all aspects of transportation for all residents.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So, I'll touch on kind of the planning department's role and give us a summary, a wrap-up of how we all coordinate together, both internally in the city and also with other regional agencies. So, the council priority, as I mentioned, as I alluded to just now, is multi-departmental. We've got Public Works, Parks and Rec, MAPS Office, Public Transportation and Parking, and Planning, all working to make sure that people are able to get where they need to go in a timely manner, using various means of mobility. And we have a progress indicator that we in Public Works look at, and that is the number of miles of sidewalks built. It's one of the council's indicators. We also look at the number of miles of bicycle facilities built. And we look at average commute time in minutes in Oklahoma City, and I'll talk about that a little more detail in a second, as well as the percentage of commute trips made by walking, bicycling, or public transportation. And that's an important measure. As I mentioned, you know, it's important to get people to where they need to go by having various means of mobility. The percentage of commute trips is, of course, heavily made by automobiles, but we would like to make it available, or make it more, make it easier for people to be able to use these alternative modes. And so, we'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. But our average commute time has been going up just a little bit over time, as you see in this chart. So, starting at the bottom in 2012 and going up to the top currently, we've seen about a 1.4% per year increase in population. And at the same time, our average commute time has increased by about .85, so not just a little over half of that. So, we are seeing a little bit of a fractional increase from year to year, but overall, we are still in pretty good shape right now, as we were similar to commute times as to about a decade ago. The Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan is an important part of our city's efforts, and it was adopted in 2018. And that's, by implementing this plan, we hope to increase the amount of people that are cycling and walking in the city. And you'll see this year, actually, that we will be implementing, installing, striping several new bike facilities. So, we hope that 2020 will kind of be a banner year when it comes to the addition of new bike facilities. We'll start to see a small network, which we can then expand upon as we continue to implement Bike Walk OKC. As far as the planning department goes and what we have, what we do internally, we do have three full-time positions, and we do- have three full-time positions, and we do, we do plans, we do various studies that inform those plans and the implementation work that we do. We recommend capital project, capital facilities projects. We look into policies, best practices around the country and around the world, and we try and use those, what works here, what works for Oklahoma City, and we, we bring those here, and we add that to the conversation. We do a lot of public engagement, and we're always looking for grant opportunities to expand the amount of revenue that we can get to, to implement the plans that the city has. I'll go into a little bit of detail on the pedestrian network. We have 2,588 miles of existing sidewalks, and there's a map you can kind of see, by looking at that, you can kind of see that in the, in the core, we used to build a lot of sidewalks, and then we, not so much over the decades as the city expanded, expanded. And then we're, we're doing a little better job now, and we're, what we're trying to do with BikeWalk OKC and some of the recent bonds and sales tax initiatives is to go back and build new sidewalk in a lot of these places where it looks a little sparse on this map. And we've had, we have over 43 million dedicated in funding to sidewalks, and that, I'll talk about MAPS 4 in a second, but that's just 2017, and that's Better Streets, Safer City, which is bond and sales tax money. And so I'll go into a little bit of detail on bicycle infrastructure. We have 254 miles of existing bike facilities right now, and we, we're looking at including additional facilities. So we've got 18.9 million for funded on-street bike facilities and 10.6 million in funded trails, and that, again, is including Better Streets, Safer City, bond and sales tax money. We have a livable streets policy that was fairly recently incorporated into Plan OKC, and it defines concepts and establishes guiding principles. And livable streets are planned, designed, and operated and maintained to be, to enable safe, convenient, and comfortable travel, and access for users of all abilities and ages regardless of their mode of transportation. So you can see an example here of people being able to walk in a very safe and comfortable situation. It's ADA accessible, and bicycle facilities are a part of that. Not every street will have a bicycle facility, but many do. Part of livable streets' concept is to have a good network throughout the city that's multimodal and is safe. And there are several guiding principles, which you can find in Plan OKC. Whenever we design a new street, we look to those principles. And we, finally, local and regional coordination. There's a list here of entities that the planning department coordinates with, including, as mentioned, Embark and Public Works. Internally, for a lot of the work that we do, there's constant coordination there to make sure that, that we're all on the same page and that projects are designed and built according to our existing standards and guidelines and the goals and the vision that we have through Plan OKC and BikeWalk OKC. We also work a lot with ODOT, who is a funding provider, and also ACOG, who provides a lot of funding that comes through the federal government, through the state, and finally through ACOG. It's a competitive process that we are, we work with them a lot to make sure that we're securing as much funding as we can for our citizens, and also making sure that we coordinate with other cities to have a good regional, a regional system. Because people don't often know where the city boundaries are or care, they just want to be able to get from one place to another, and so we work to make sure that can happen. And finally, MAPS 4, just wanted to highlight that a little bit. And I, we kept this separate just because we don't have specific projects funded for a lot of these, for example, sidewalks. So as, as we go forward in the future and as, as this comes into focus a little bit more, we'll be able to report in, in more detail on MAPS 4. But for now, we do have 55 million in sidewalk amenities and placemaking, 20 million for bike lanes, 8 million for specific trails, 12 million for buses and traffic signal prioritization, 10 million for bus stop upgrades and new ADA accessible shelters, 60 million for advanced transit options, and 5 million for future planning and land acquisition. So that kind of sums up our multimodal approach and performance for this council priority, developing a transportation system that works for all residents. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions, and also Eric and Jason are available for additional questions.
Yeah, I was curious, on that first slide, I think it was the commute time, can you define commute and then explain how that is measured, that metric is measured?
Yes, it's a census question, and it's the American Community Survey, and it basically asks people, you know, regardless of your, the mode of transportation you use, how long does it take you to get to work? And I don't, I don't recall exactly offhand the precise wording of the question, but it's assumed that it's kind of a door-to-door thing.
Okay. And then is there, because so, my commute time is like three minutes. So someone who maybe is on the bus and is taking three hours to get to work because they live on the south side and work up on Memorial Road, is there a median commute time that is a measure or like is plotted out in that survey, in that American?
You know, that's a good question. I, this says average. I'll look into it and see if it, I assume that it means mean, but it could mean median, so.
Could be median, okay.
It, it's, it's not going to be all that different, I don't think, in this case because, just because of the, what I think the distribution is. But yeah, I'll look into it, that's a good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate that. I've asked, also asked Eric to give us an update on the pavement management program, and this is just something, you know, just talking about the good things that have been happening with Better Streets with the GeoBond program. We do hear a lot of complaint, and we see it in our, in our survey about the condition of streets, and want people to see how much effort is going into paying attention to that and making sure we're, we're addressing those issues with our streets, because our streets do carry more than just automobile traffic, and we want to make sure that everyone understands what we're doing to improve those streets.
Thank you. We are looking to do possibly up to a quarterly update, this being the first of those updates to begin today on pavement management. And I think as we talk about a lot of the new streets that are going in, there's going to be a time where we have to actually come up with a management program to make sure that they don't go back to the condition that they were when we started. And so, and it's something we've been very actively pursuing in Public Works, looking at systems and opportunities. So today, we're going to answer a lot more questions about where we come up with a PCI number, what PCI means. We're going to do some historical to kind of show where the numbers are at, but you can expect some future presentations as we really start to talk about how we maintain and manage pavements going forward from here. So we're going to talk about PCI in a couple of different ways. What is it? How's it measured? The ratings? How are they used? Some next steps, and then we'll open up for some questions here at the end as well. Pavement Condition Index, and we've talked about this somewhat. It's a score of 0 to 100, 0 being the worst, 100 being the best. And so we have a range of streets in Oklahoma City that range from 0 to the high 90s. A brand-new street, even when driven as brand-new, doesn't regularly score a 100, but it scores in the high 90s. Obviously, if you hit one manhole lit in a street, it changes its PCI score, because it's definitely a condition of smoothness when we talk about the smoothness of a road and how you actually cross it. This is a measure that's used widely by civil engineering. It's also one used by most cities, and so it is a way that we can do some comparisons, but definitely it has an organized method of how the number is compiled. But it's a statistical measure, and it requires a manual survey, so it's not just machine-driven. There's actually some visual observation that has to take place as well, looking at some of those pavement conditions. I know this little brochure on the side is super small, but what we wanted to note was that we do have this information already available on OKC.gov. And so if you go to the city's website and you follow the links to Public Works, we've got some more detailed information. We commonly actually take some of these to some of our neighborhood meetings when they're asking about street conditions, and so we're able to hand out this little bit of literature to them, updating them on pavement condition. This is a device, it's called an inertial profiler. It's on a city vehicle, and it's attached to the front bumper, and this is what measures that roughness or smoothness of a city street. It's a methodology that we adopted a few years ago with a goal that we would try to make sure we drove every city street every year. Previously, we were updating data almost every other year, so it was important for us to get out and make sure that as we were improving city streets, that we're doing the best that we could in keeping up with the latest in information. But we do follow it up with periodic inspections and such, and so if you see this vehicle driving some of the city streets, you'll just see this extra equipment and hardware that are attached, but it does drive residential and arterial streets citywide. So how is it measured? Again, what we're looking for are defects in the pavement, and this gives you some examples. The left four photos are concrete street examples, the right four photos are asphalt. We do have a combination of asphalt and concrete throughout the city, and the way that they fail is a little bit different, and we get that question a lot. You don't see lots of resurfacing of concrete streets because there's not a resurfacing option for a concrete street. When a concrete street fails, it has to be replaced. Asphalt can be milled and overlaid, which is why it's a good technology, especially with the number of miles that we have in Oklahoma City. We commonly report that we have 8,000 lane miles. It turns out that it's also 3,500 centerline miles, which is a measure that we're starting to use to be a little more connecting to our residents. But on the left, on concrete, some of the things that you start to see is just general cracking. In the upper right, you see upheaval. So when, when we do get a defect under the pavement in concrete, it lifts the entire panels upwards, it doesn't just create a small pothole. We do get faulting or unevenness with, which occurs at the joints. And then spalling is where that surface of the concrete just peels off. And it can happen for a number of reasons. Sometimes it's just due to freeze and thaw, and other, other factors are just the way that it was constructed. Asphalt, are those right four photos? Some of those that you see are flushing or bleeding, that's where you start to see some of the oil material starting to come to the surface of the asphalt, which is that upper left-hand photo. We see raveling, which is where the surface course starts to lose that elasticity. You start seeing a lot of just the pebbles and things starting to be created in that asphalt surface. In the lower left is where you see the heaving or the rutting. It's commonly seen in most of the intersections, and it's caused by the stopping of cars, or it's caused by soft pavement on the edge. It's typically either due to higher-weight vehicles like delivery trucks. It can also be seen in the intersections where it's the stopping motion and the tires actually pushing up that asphalt as you near that stop bar. And then the last one is cracking on the lower right. Simply pavements over time, those volatile compounds that are inside that asphalt, gas off, they go back into the atmosphere, it leaves it less pliable, and that's when cracking also occurs in the asphalt surface. So as we measure PCI, all these different indicators are being looked at to help come up with that score. It's also measured with the smoothness of the overall road as well. So when you look at those PCI ratings, we score those in different categories, 86 to 100 being very good, 0 to 30 being very poor, and you've got several of those that are in the middle. One of the things to note, and a couple of the data points that I'll show you in just a moment, when we get into the 0 and 30, and sometimes just something in the 40 to 50, we're looking at a complete reconstruction of the road. There's not the opportunity for it to be milled and overlaid. So there's a very small window of opportunity after an asphalt road has aged that we have a mill and overlay option, which is a lot more cost-effective than a complete replacement. This is a map. We also have this available online at data.okc.gov. So if you were to visit data.okc.gov, you'll see there's a pavement condition link there that you can actually zoom in and see what the current PCI score is for each street in Oklahoma City. We're not able to zoom in, obviously, today, but we are showing here that there's still a lot of streets, the ones that are in red, those are those super-low PCIs, those are those 0 to 30s that are on here. Those ones that are blue and green, those are traditionally the higher PCI streets. Now, the blue and the green are overlapping some of the reds, so it's hard to see. But again, as we've tracked this over time, these are some of those measures that we're using on prioritizing streets citywide, looking at those lowest PCIs, but also looking at those highest-traveled trafficked roads, which is why you see a little bit more blue towards the center of the city versus our extremities. There's just simply higher traffic in the core, which is helping prioritize some of those projects. But we are actively working citywide, so we have a number of streets, even in the outside areas of, of the core, that are being worked.
Did you say that, that map is accessible on our website?
It is, so at data.okc.gov. So you can't get there directly from OKC.gov, there's data.okc.gov. There's a lot of geographic information system data there, not just this map, but you can find ward boundaries, you can find a lot of school district information, there's, there's just a lot of things about Oklahoma City that are there. So as we collect this data and as we log that into a system, there's a lot more to, to looking at pavement management moving forward. And so we've, over the past year, with a lot of assistance from staff and some software and just looking at different ways of sorting data, we're able to start creating dashboard-type tools to give us real-time information, and this may answer a little bit more about what Councilwoman Hammond was just asking, you know, what are the conditions of streets more specifically? As we measure differences between arterial, minor arterial, major collector, and residential, you're going to find here is, this is the average PCI by street type. So major arterials, their average PCI currently is a 69. But if you look at some of our, our smaller rural arterials, you're going to see that the average PCI is a 58. So we're able to actually sort that data to help us decide which streets should have higher priority. But generally, right now, the priority is the higher traffic, which means the ones that are at the top of this, of this list are receiving more of the, the resurfaced streets than those at the bottom. We're still doing some work on the, on the, on the streets that have lesser traffic, but we're looking at the data as a whole. But this generally shows you that our arterials have a higher PCI than our rural roads. We can also sort the data by total miles. And so if we look at the total miles, and I mentioned 3,500 centerline miles, you're going to see that we have nearly 1,400 miles there between a 70 and an 85. So a large group of Oklahoma City streets are actually in that good PCI range. But there are still hundreds of miles that are very, very low, and those are the ones that you're going to see here at the top of this graph. So there's still work to be done, and for that average to climb, we simply have to continue to improve all Oklahoma City streets. But we're using the data to help prioritize dollars, knowing that as we work on better streets, we work with bond issue and sales tax funding, we're putting those dollars right where they need to be so that we're impacting the, the most residents as possible. Hello.
May I request a copy of this slide, please, via email? And earlier from Jeff Butler's presentation, the MAPS 4 slide with sidewalks and the bike lanes and the, those, that.
We'll be happy to get those to you, yes.
Thank you. So I want to connect people, I think, on social media to this data page so that they can see for themselves, and then link them to Better Streets, they can see for themselves.
And to explain the data that you're seeing in this next slide, too, I mean, we're starting to look at the data real-time, so instead of just updating annually a PCI, we're actually starting to manage what all that information looks like citywide, how to best make plans going into the next year. So this next one is Pavement Condition Index for just generally our streets, just looking at it a little bit differently. But again, you can see again that more than 50% of the streets in Oklahoma City are in good or satisfactory range, meaning they're 70 or higher. So more than half the city's streets have a very good PCI rating or higher, but we still do have that half that are lower, and 25% of them are in poor condition. So, you know, we have not addressed all city's streets, but again, that's again our focus for Better Streets, Safer City, and looking forward into pavement management. So how's that PCI used? We talk about it for needs of maintenance, monitoring pavement condition like the maps that we've just shown, but we're also starting to develop those preventative maintenance strategies in evaluating materials and future construction projects. But generally speaking, the higher the PCI, the less expensive it is to do work on or replace or to make that street new again than a lower PCI. For example, if we get into complete reconstruction, the cost per mile, per lane mile, is $3,000 to $400,000 to reconstruct per lane mile or for a full-depth resurfacing. When we get into a maintenance mode, we're able to do thinlay resurfacing, which you do on a much better street, and we're talking $30,000 to $40,000. So a significant difference in cost, if we're able to actually get the streets to a certain level and we can get into a routine maintenance, we'll actually be able to keep the streets in good condition for less cost. And this is what that looks like. So over time, as the pavement begins to fail, and as we start looking at the different treatment methods, obviously, we have to treat pavements at an early PCI range. So we would like to start in the future at a point where PCI starts to approach 70, we're starting to do some of that routine maintenance, and that's not pothole patching. That's where we're starting to talk about thinlay resurfacing at that lesser cost to go ahead and preserve that surface course of the pavement, to avoid that cracking and to avoid some of those failures that start to occur once the water intrudes the surface. We can get into some preventative maintenance, but once we get about midway down and we start getting into that 60 PCI, we get into deferred action and rehabilitation. Anything below about a 50, we get into a complete reconstruction, and that's where the cost for the city significantly increases. So we're able to use that, and we can start rating streets in a way that also shows that it's more than just the lowest PCI and the highest traffic. We're going to get into a maintenance program that we'll talk a little bit more about, maybe a future update for pavement report. This is where we'd like to be. If we had a, a system that you were able to make easily maintainable, you would have a program that allowed streets to deteriorate to a certain degree, and they would a program that allowed streets to deteriorate to a certain degree, and they would automatically be improved, where you'd have a constant street, or at least an average of city streets citywide. We are not there yet. We have a number of those streets that are like the orange dotted line that you see on this drawing that simply can't be done this year. They fall into that lesser category, and we're sending that significant treatment to get that improved back to a new condition. But that preservation treatment system is something that we're looking for, hopefully in the next few years, starting, again, a thin-lay type program for Oklahoma City. So next steps, today, we're talking about just the introductions and just being a little bit more upfront about PCI, how the data is collected, making sure that that data is online and available. But we'd like to start talking about some of the projects and the work completed to show some of those highly deteriorated streets and bringing them back into a new condition moving forward. We're going to bring also forward a maintenance program, something, again, that is going to have some software that's helping drive some of that decision-making, but again, getting into more of the data that I've shown. And we'll talk about the future as well. But obviously, with residents having a number-one concern of the quality of city streets, this is something that we're actually working on daily in Public Works, something we'll continue to do updates coming back to you at the City Council in the future. With that, I can answer any questions you might have about pavement management.
Thank you, Eric. The next presentation we had a few weeks ago, we'd had some conversation about the Boathouse Foundation and the Whitewater facility, and there'd been a request for periodic updates with the council. We talked about doing some in briefings and some in front of the council, and so today we'll have several people involved. Doug's going to start us off here, talk a little bit about the finances, and then Mike Knopf and Stephen Ball are here from Boathouse Foundation, talk a little bit about the status and what's going on at the Boathouse Foundation.
Yeah, so Doug Dowler, Budget Director, and again, this is one of the first of our quarterly updates on Boathouse Foundation, its finances and operations. And so one of the things I wanted to touch on first is just the connection between city staff, elected representatives, and the active participation that we do have with the foundation governance. And with that, Councilwoman Nice is on the Board of Directors. Parks and Recreation Director Doug Kupper and Public Works Civil Engineer Ford Jim Llewellyn are on the Operations Committee. I'm serving on the Finance Committee. And in addition, Sam Sladen, who's a Senior Project Manager from General Services, is working with each of the various entities that are operating city facilities to ensure that the significant equipment maintenance activities are being done appropriately. The foundation has been providing us with regular financial updates and projections each month, and we've been reviewing those. Each time a request for a disbursement of the management fee has come in. And so, again, we've got a lot of city activity related to the Boathouse Foundation to be involved in its operations and that. And so today, Mike Knopf is here as the Executive Director of the foundation, and also Stephen Ball, who's the Chief Operating Officer, will also be presenting some of the information on their current activities.
Thank you, Doug. Mike Knopf with the Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation. You've got the controller. Okay. Well, I'm going to start off by just doing a quick year review from 2019. We did have a lot going on, and this is a few highlights. We did have the 15th anniversary of the Oklahoma Regatta Festival, people from all over the country. I think we actually, through the course of 2019, determined that every state was represented in terms of participation in the Boathouse District in Oklahoma City in multiple countries. So we say collective impact, all these events coming together to make an impact in Oklahoma City and what we're doing at the Oklahoma River. I also want to mention Paddle Sport Retailer Show, Accelerator from America. This is something we worked with the mayor on. In fact, that photo there is Mayor Garcetti of LA going whitewater rafting, so we had a lot of fun with that. Swiftwater rescue training events have been very prevalent throughout the course of 2019. We know that they have made a significant impact as we speak to our first responders, and we have several more in store for 2020. Floating Films, Music Series, the Whitewater Festival, River Scream, really trying some different things that bring people to the Boathouse District. And overall, it's about a $23 million economic impact when you consider all of the different events and programs. I also want to mention youth engagement with River Sport Adventures. That's obviously a cornerstone to the Boathouse Foundation and what we do. We've touched the lives of our 3,200 Oklahoma City youth through our outreach programs. These are free activities, kids experiencing our camps, our adventures, our different activities. You can see a cardboard canoe event there at the top right. That's actually a curriculum that we're launching with Oklahoma City Public Schools. We did a pilot with John Rex, and that went very, very well. We also are, as we've mentioned before, very active in the Thrive Initiative, and I'll talk briefly in just a moment. Total value of youth participation, it's about $391,000 in terms of all the free access that we provided through all these programs, through Thrive, the Youth Leagues, through the FAC program with Oklahoma City Police Department and OKC Respond. And then I also like to emphasize that that's really supported by the Outdoor Foundation, many other foundations, and as much Gaylord Foundation, Kirkpatrick Family Fund. So we've had a really, I think, powerful year in terms of just youth engagement at the River. And I do want to mention over 1.5 million in college scholarships just in 2019 awarded to youth who've gotten involved at the River, $10 million in total. This is a map that just kind of illustrates the impact of the Thrive Initiative that, you know, we were selected, Oklahoma City is one of four cities in America through the Boathouse Foundation, to really help advance outdoor culture. So it's a collective impact initiative where we've partnered with many different agencies, again, about providing access to kids. In fact, I'm going to Denver next week to present Oklahoma City's role to the outdoor industry at the Outdoor Retailer Show, and I think this is going to present some more, some many more opportunities in 2020. And then private events, I did want to mention that that's a big part of what we do, too. It's a revenue generator. We do a lot of events with other nonprofits that come and have their events in the Boathouse District. You can see a few highlights here, the Oklahoma Book Festival, Lyric Theater. We have, you know, many weddings. I had no idea we'd have so many weddings in the Boathouse District, but we've, thousands of people have come through through these different private events. And before I turn it over to Stephen Ball, I wanted to mention a few quick highlights on social media. Our Facebook followers have grown about 8% in 2019, up to over 75,000. Our email subscribers have grown 15% to over 50,000 email subscribers. And I think we also do customer ratings and surveys where we were rated, customers who rated our experience in River Sport as good or excellent rose from 83% to 94%. So far above the industry standards, so we're proud of that. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Ball, who's going to give a quick update on our financials.
Thank you, Stephen Ball, Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation. Just real quick, on the comparative income statement for the whole foundation, contributed support was, on the graph, you'll see the 2018 is on the left, the orange, 2019 is in purple. So 20, the contributed support did go down, but there was, in 2018, there was a $2 million reimbursement that was part of the 18. In earned income, though, rose over 2018. Total revenue was up just slightly combined, while total operating expenses were down pretty significantly, and then EBITDA or net earnings was up in 2019. Break that out a little bit more. Earned revenue encompasses several activities, but merchandise, which is also food and beverage, and the pro shop, private event rentals are not just in adventures, but also in the boathouses, such as the weddings that Mike had mentioned. Rental fees is mostly just the lockers, wet suits, those types of things that guests might want to rent while they're enjoying the adventures. And then the actual adventure passes, you'll see there's growth there as well over 2018. Program fees is mostly the rowing activities for the different age groups and skill levels. And then management fee, you'll see in 2019 is, we've received just over $1.1 million of the management fee to date. The next slide breaks out more specifically to River Sport Adventures. So you can see there was growth in basically every category, retail, food and beverage, parking was up slightly, the team building and birthdays were up slightly. One-day revenue was up slightly, and then season pass had the biggest growth in terms of actual dollars, of being up about $120,000 in revenue. So total adventures revenue grew about $330,000 in 2019, over 2018. Also, our total rafters increased about 22%, about 14,000 people more we rafted in 2019. So the management fee on the next slide, the $1.5 million that was approved for fiscal year, total that we've been paid is 1.152 year-to-date. Okay, and then get into the 2020 Boathouse Foundation budget. You can see 18, 19's forecast, and then the 2020 budget by major category. So contributed support, 2018 does include, again, the $2 million in city reimbursement in the, that was, it goes into the, well, it's not charitable, but it goes into the charitable support on our income statement. 2019 forecast, so then was actually up comparatively if you deduct the $2 million in 18. And then 2020, we've trimmed it down just slightly with the known expectation that some of the grants and things that we received in year one, such as the Outdoor Foundation, is weighted heavily. So we know that that's not going to continue the same every year. River Sport revenue, this does include more than just adventures, but you can see there's some nice year-over-year growth there in that major category. And then other income in 2019 forecast, that's where the 1.1 million in management fee is included. And then 2020 budget does include the, almost all of the remaining 1.5, just shy of that. I think we're at 1.4 currently on the cash projection forecast. And then it does contemplate the possibility of having a management fee for fiscal year 2021. Okay? And then the next slide is expenses in major categories, salaries and wages. In 2018, important to note, we did have 45 full-time headcount at the end of 2018, and we currently have 30. So we've made some pretty drastic cuts in our full-time staff, but this does include the 150 to 175 seasonal workers that help actually operate the adventures and the River Sport operation. So our plan for 2020 is to basically keep that flat over 2019. Total utilities, we did have a nice decrease. Some of that was operational efficiencies, but also the city has helped us with reviewing all of our utility bills to look for opportunities to save with the different types of rate plans and things that can be taken advantage of. And then 2020, while there is some increase due to the new surfer that's going in, it is offset by a conservative number for the new capacitors that are being installed there to help with our energy savings. And then all other expenses, so you can see the total expense for the foundation and then the net income there at the bottom. Quick update on payables. Our current open accounts payable as of yesterday was about $120,000. And if you compare that to same time last year, we were about $305,000. So we've significantly improved on our accounts payables. And that's it for the financial quick overview, and I'll turn it back over to Mike to talk about campaign.
Sure. A big focus for, again, for 2020 is launching our new campaign, a goal of about 3.5 million. This is over a couple of years. Just a quick note, what was included in the budget for our revenue from charitable gifts did not contemplate the campaign really kicking off, because we're working on getting that in place, but we think that is an opportunity to create some significant new momentum. And it really tied to the matching grant with the Thrive Initiative and many other opportunities, as you can see, fundraising events, incremental new corporate sponsorships, you know, even like the surfing venue, for example, we're actively involved in getting some sponsorship on that. Additional sources of revenue that we also are really working towards advancing, one is commercial development, which you've heard about. We're continuing to make progress on that, which we think over time is going to make a big impact. And again, the implementation of those Maps Three surplus funds projects, all were strategically positioned to create new revenue streams, and that will be an impact moving forward in the future. I did mention the surfing machine. You can see the image on the right. Construction is beginning literally this week, so we're optimistic on that impact it will make on the Boathouse Foundation over the next year and the years to come. And the master plan, the commercial development piece, again, the critical element, we think that first project will be a catalyst, which we've, which the Barquet project is the first project for future opportunities, which will create revenue-generating opportunities for the Boathouse Foundation, but also, I think, continue to advance. The Boathouse District is such a differentiator for Oklahoma City, so we want to make sure that they are the right things that fit in.
Can you point out where the Barquet is going in on that last slide?
Sure. It's at the top right, well, not, it's just, if you see the cul-de-sac in the Whitewater facility just north of the Whitewater Center, it's kind of that L-shaped building, and so positioned there because it does actually have some access to the water for what they call doggy paddles. So there'll be a variety of different ways to engage and how that facility will work with our operation. In fact, in terms of dual passes, yes.
So what by the L in that area, is that possibility of future development going in there? Is that what's anticipated to try to market to other restaurants?
Yeah, all the other things beyond the L are, we've contemplated a master plan, things that we think could work well within the Boathouse District. So it is, as others are coming forward with ideas, we're trying to create just a roadmap of different opportunities, a vision for what we could do. And then events, we have a lot in store, as you can see, for 2020. You know, a few highlights, if you go to the next one, is, this is brand-new USO Warrior Week. We are being selected one of three places in the country where we will have a week of activities in the Boathouse District with thousands of people with the USO. Also, the potential of an international event coinciding with that, that would be internationally televised. And then the Olympic Trials, which is the final slide here, which we're looking at, actually hosting two rounds, the first time that this has been done. Everything is going to be in Oklahoma City. Last, in 2016, there was one round in Charlotte. Now it is all here, so we're very much connected to the Tokyo Olympics. And what this will mean, too, is athletes will be here for quite some time, training in advance of the Olympic Trials. And then we use this as a catalyst to inspire youth and other folks to get involved and active and be involved. So I think this is really going to be an exciting year for us in terms of events. So with that, I really appreciate everyone's support, and if there's any questions you may have.
Yeah, I do have a question. So in, early in the slides, you had mentioned the $23 million in economic impact. Can you describe a little bit more how you come across that number and what that number or not incorporates, but is that like sales tax that's generated? Is that just dollars being spent? What does that mean?
Well, we had an independent study done by HVS, I believe they're called, out of Chicago. It contemplates a lot of those things, like heads and beds, all of the people coming here to events, spending money, staying in our hotels. They have a lot of metrics or ways that they can measure that. Obviously, the number, the sales tax that is generated, the number of people coming through the venue, and all the different things that we do, the attractions, the events. The events are a major driver of this, frankly, just by, because this is people coming from outside Oklahoma City and spending money and spending time. And some of the events that we have, like the Olympic Trials, may not be a lot of athletes, but they're here for a long time. So it's a lot of room nights, and that goes into, that's taken into account. Whereas the Oklahoma Regatta Festival, for example, that's like 3,500 room nights with the 50 teams that come and thousands of people. So it's a combination of all those things that go into the study that was done.
Can we, can you share that study with us?
Sure, certainly, certainly.
Love to see that. If you could email it to Debbie.
Yeah, certainly. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So the last thing that I have, sorry, the last thing that I have, and I know that kept you a long time with presentations, just wanted to point out, the sales tax report is in your packets. I've talked to each one of the council members about the sales tax. We did our January sales tax, which will reflect sales tax in the first part of, the last part of November, the first part of December was down. last part of November, the first part of December was down, down about 5.5% for sales tax, which is fairly significant. A part of that was a major refund that was provided back to a company that should have been remitting in another area, so that had an impact. If you pull that out, it's still down 1.9%, so it's really more of a turn than we were anticipating, I think, but it's along the lines of what Russell's told us, is that he expected January to be one of our worst months. We are expecting things to slow in the second part of the year. With this change, I think, combined with this, we had use tax down 18%, and that's fairly significant as well. Both of those had an impact on our projections for the budget for next year. We'll talk about that more at the February 11th Budget Workshop, but I just want to give you a heads-up about that, again, to say that publicly, that sales tax is turning. It's something that we're going to continue to monitor. Russell's told us in the next few months, we're likely to see some growth in some of those months, but it should be softer than what we've seen in the past, and we've asked departments to propose budget cuts, to prepare ourselves for going into what will be proposed to the council in May. And we'll have more detailed discussion about that at the Budget Workshop, but just wanted to mention that. That's all that I have.
On item 13, citizens to be heard, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. We'll start with Ronnie Kirk.
My address is 2328 Baltimore Ward Square. You know, in two months, a lot of change has happened, you know? I've heard the word "common sense" being used twice by, one by Governor Stitt. He wasn't talking about guns. When they were rezoning Florida to suppress the bloat voters, that word "common sense" was also used. In two months, I've seen on CBS where they showed thousands of people, 1,000 people running at one time, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Texas, Oklahoma City, twice at Penn Square. You know, the city's coming so far, we're trying to get so much going for us in this town. Now, the information I get put on there, you know, I didn't know our chief of police was going to be here today. I already put his name on that paper, because I'm going to make sure he had a copy of that. You know, our city council, as one unit, y'all use a little common sense, and the stuff I got on that paper, ask somebody that worked for the force, do that make sense? You know, the council has so much power when they work together. The governor, people listen to him also, but y'all represent the city. People follow y'all, they listen to y'all every day, you know? So, I don't like to sound like a broken record every time I come down here, but to see 1,000 people run at one time is happening. It just ain't the black people doing it, tearing guns in place. Lot of people got guns in these places. You know, some of them are just acting out. You know, it's time to y'all think of the city, it's still somebody's agenda to keep things going. Think of what's going on for the city to help all of us. And that's what I wanted to come and say to y'all this morning, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Next person is Joy Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Assistant Mayor, I'm not sure, and Council. I talked to Mr. the city manager this morning and stuff, and I don't know if he had the time to check into it, but if you think about it, and yes, we're doing a lot better on the sidewalks. I will agree with that, because I went to Dallas and they're, oh, it's really, really bad down there, but we still have a long way to go. I understand that. The second item is the scooters. I'm going to keep coming back until something is done, and if you think about it, under the state mandate and all that, state laws and everything, under city laws, the police can enforce the laws, and they're not doing it. The simple fact is, if you look at the app, you have to have a driver's license, not an ID, but a driver's license and a credit card to unlock the scooters. If you have to have a driver's license, a DL, then that puts you into the motor vehicle thing, puts you under motor vehicles. Bricktown and within the city, the core downtown Oklahoma City, the laws are being broken every day, and it's like I've said before, I've gotten almost hit on multiple occasions and everything else. Can we please do something? That's all I'm asking.
So, Joy had brought this up a few weeks ago, and I'd asked Legal to take a look at this, and they're still looking into this, but there's a couple of issues. One is the police department, the police officers in the Bricktown area and downtown area do enforce laws as related to scooters, and particularly when they're dealing with sidewalks. They have to witness it, but if they witness someone on the sidewalk, generally what they do is try to help them understand, because a lot of times it's visitors that are here that don't understand our laws. They'll try to help them understand how they appropriately use the scooters and that they can't be on the sidewalk, so they do try to manage it as best they can. There are some questions that I'd ask Steve to just respond to. Steve Christwell, Municipal Counselor's Office, just to respond to. You can stay right there, Joy, you're fine.
Yeah, I'm just turning around so I can see.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, it is true.
What we can and can't do in terms of--
We can absolutely enforce the use of these scooters on the sidewalk. That is clearly prohibited under ordinance. We do have a lot of other ordinances that we do believe would be applicable, a vast majority that apply to other motor vehicles are most likely applicable to scooters, but we are still looking at whether or not, you know, there's some language that we need to maybe change to make it more clear, and also trying to distinguish, you know, if a motor vehicle versus vehicle, where these fit inside that scheme, so we're still--
The other thing is, the other issue I've got, and anybody that's down in Bricktown and everything else, is these kids underage riding these scooters. That's where a lot of the issue is coming from, or family members riding their little kids on these scooters. If you don't remember what happened, I can't remember where it was, the mother wasn't the most responsible thing, and a child passed away. That's what my biggest fear is. What's going to happen is these people get really goofy and everything, especially after, say, 5, 6, 7 o'clock at night, going to end up running underneath of the streetcar.
And that is something, Joy, that we're, one of the things that we're looking at as far as just the underage driving and what flexibility we have enforcement of that.
Right.
It has to be something an officer would have to observe, but we want to make sure that whether or not there's something we need to change within our laws to address that, so we're considering that.
It isn't that hard. Anything--
Easy for you and me to say, but I want to make sure that we're doing it legally.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, any time, say, after 3 o'clock in the afternoon during the week, and in Friday and Saturday nights, it isn't that hard. There's always officers down there around Harkins and all that, and that's where these kids are riding. I'm just asking, please, because if I get hit, I'm not going to be responsible.
Okay, sounds like we're looking into it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Nobody else has signed up, so we are moving into executive session now.